To order, this is a regular board meeting of the Silver Consolidated School Board of Education. Today is July 16th, 2018, and the time is 6:02 PM. Welcome, members of the board, members of administration, guests, community members. Mrs. Hernandez, would you conduct a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. McNolan.
Here.
Mrs. Montenegro.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Dr. Diaz.
Here.
And Mr. Flores.
Thank you. If everyone will please stand and join me in our pledge of allegiance and New Mexico flag salute.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the American cultures.
Again, welcome, everyone. Just as a point of order, for those that would like to address the board during public comments, please fill out a public comment request form and turn it in to Mrs. Hernandez. First on our agenda this evening is review and approval of minutes from our June 18th work session and our June 18th, 2018, regular meeting. Those were included in our board book, as everybody had an opportunity to review any edits or recommended revisions. Seeing none, entertain approval of our minutes from our June 18th work session and regular meeting.
Aye, so moved.
Got a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving our minutes from June 18th work session and regular meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that passes. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is consideration and approval of our agenda. And you will notice that it was revised to include the action items on the second reading of the policies. That was something that just slipped by me when we were creating the agenda, but so that's the, I believe, the only revision, is that correct, Mrs. Hernandez? So I will entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
I have a question. Is this a time for discussion or do I wait for a motion?
We can have a motion and then a discussion if you'd like, or you can ask a question now, I believe. What's your question, Mr. Flores?
My question is, if we're going to consideration and approval of Silver Consolidated Schools athletic handbook, and I had talked to Mr. Klaw earlier today about some issues on the handbook, would that still be in the agenda of those issues, have they been corrected or addressed?
I believe we could make those recommendations during discussion on that action item for, if we all, I guess, agree to those changes, then we could certainly. Dr. Diaz?
I think there were several things when I read some of the emails ongoing, and when I read it and had similar concerns, I think there will be a few things that come up, not necessarily that require changing of the handbook in the printed version, but maybe implementation or where things go, so.
And certainly if we so chose to, we could table that, or we could have the discussion and table if more information is needed or we're sought, we could do that as well. I know we're getting close on a deadline, I know we want to go to print and get it out there, but we could have that discussion and then determine whether we wanted to, okay, we can, we're good with this as a board and we can move forward, or no, let's get some more information and revisit again at another meeting. So I think we can leave, if, Mr. Flores, your question is whether we need to leave it on as an action item or not, I think we can proceed if that sounds good to you.
And then depending on how many revisions, or if there are actual revisions for the print portion, then we can either agree to just add those tonight, or if there are several issues, then we could table it.
The other thing we could do too is maybe approve, if we like, the current format, knowing that maybe it's a working doc, well, it's kind of tough with signature, but I mean, maybe that could be something part of the discussion, this could be changed upon board approval or updated, but ideally it would be nice to get it out in its final form prior to school.
We might have to have a special gathering.
We could do that, too. So with that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda as presented. Mr. Flores has made a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Next up on our agenda this evening is information and presentations, these are non-action items. The first program presentation is Mr. Rogers with the asbestos management plan. Welcome, Mr. Rogers.
Thank you for having me here this evening. I know most of you, but those of you that do not know me, my name is Bill Rogers and I function within the school district as the designated person. I haven't quite figured out what designation I have, but I am the designated person at this point in time. Mr. Brown has asked me to give you a brief background on the public notification which you will be asked later on this evening to approve. In 1980s, Congress and the Environmental Protection Agency, as part of the Clean Air and Water Act of the 1980s, mandated that all public schools through EPA Regulation 40 CFR 763.85B, which is better known as the Asbestos Hazard Emergency Response Act, identify any asbestos-containing building materials within its facilities and develop a management plan for those materials, along with an appropriate response to those identified Responses by the schools could be to maintain those identified materials in place, to isolate those materials, encapsulate those materials, or remove those materials. But also required that there be a surveillance of those identified materials with an onsite inspection of those materials every six months by the designated person and by an outside agency, be done every three years. It also includes rules for the disposal of any removed materials and an annual notification of the occupants of those facilities to contractors, parents, grandparents, and the status and location of those materials within each school facility. I included in your board package a summary of the most recent six-year, six-month surveillance inspection and the three-year reinspection of the Silver Consolidated School facilities that was completed last June. The act also requires that each year, an annual notification be made, which basically states where those records are available for the viewing of any interested parties. This is a copy of the records that would be available annually for inspection by the public. It is by building facility, it gives the location of those materials, what those materials are, a visual presentation by floor plan where those materials are located, what classification those materials are in, and what the responses, the most appropriate response would be for those materials. That's about as brief as I can be. I'd be happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Questions from the board? I think included in the packet was, in our board packet was, that executive summary. And then there is also the notice, the public notice, and then we'll have the action item later this evening. Questions, comments? All right, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda under information and presentations is Stone McGee and Company with the audit from 2016 and 17. Welcome.
Thank you. I don't know if it makes any difference, but this is an action item, so I don't know, because we're talking about presentations, but it's required that you take action to either approve or disapprove the audit at the conclusion of my presentation.
Presentation?
Yes, okay.
I don't think it's on the agenda.
I don't think we have, but we can certainly put it on our future agenda for action, for approval as well.
That's fine, I just wanted to make it, let you know.
Thank you.
And hopefully when I'm through with my presentation, you guys will vote to approve it, because I don't want to start over again, so, okay? Okay, first and foremost, you have an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, which in essence is the highest that a CPA firm can give. It says that in our opinion, your financial statements are fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And maybe not second, but also very important, is that you have an unmodified opinion on your compliance with federal programs. We test federal programs for specific federal regulations, and we have, not given you, you've earned an unmodified opinion on those as well, which again is as high as it can I'm assuming that you guys have had access to the audit report or whatever, but I'd just like to point out just a couple of things, and then I'll be done and I'll entertain any questions that you have, but I don't think people realize necessarily that you guys are managing about $70 million in assets. Because it's not just the cash that you have, it's your physical plant and everything else. You're managing about $70 million worth of assets. That's a huge responsibility and one that, at least from the management point of view, they are doing a very good job of managing. They're keeping track of the fixed assets, they are, again, I've got an unmodified opinion, and your books and records that we used to begin our process, we did not have adjustments to, which means that the numbers that you guys are getting to manage this district, at least through June 30th of 2017, were good numbers, okay? So you can, at least at that point in time, you can rely on the numbers that Michelle is generating for you guys for budget purposes and that sort of stuff, because we didn't have any adjustments to those, okay? Okay, as to comments, we, there are three levels of comments. There are material weaknesses, which are the most serious, there are significant deficiencies, which are the second highest, and then there are other non-compliance. You had none of the first two at all. We have four very small comments, which I don't think is necessary to go through unless you want me to, because they're detailed in the back of the report, but basically what they relate to is compliance with purchasing procedures and that sort of stuff. And you guys got to remember, this district generates literally thousands of purchase orders. If we find three or four that are wrong, that's pretty good. And so basically what we have is some very small non-compliance issues, which are in the audit report, at the end of the audit report, I don't think there's any real reason to go over them now. We have already gone over them in an exit conference with Patrick and we've also, and the superintendent and Michelle. I guess one thing I ought to point out here, guys, if this seems like it's late, it's really not. It's late in a full presentation to the board in that respect, but the audit report was due by November 15th in the state auditor's office, and it was there timely, okay? Now, the state auditor has his own timeline for when he is going to approve it, and for those of you who aren't familiar with it, we submit the report to him, they go through a review process, and they let us know when we can release it to the district and that sort of stuff, at their own discretion. If they have comments or questions, they'll send me that, but other than that, what ends up happening in an awful lot of times is, if somebody's getting headlines in Santa Fe, you know, or Albuquerque, that one's going to get reviewed first, and somebody who hasn't had any problems is going to get pushed to the back, and that happens periodically. Anyway, they finally review it and release the report, but if we had any comments, those comments, as we found them, were discussed with Michelle. In an exit conference, when we left the building, when we finished our fieldwork, they were discussed with the audit committee, which included a board member, included the superintendent, and included Michelle. I don't, I'm just trying to make you guys aware that I didn't just come up with this from June 30th of 17 right now, okay, that type of thing. Other than that, that's all we really have. I would point out that I have to go through a peer review, which is in essence, I have another firm that comes in and audits me, so to speak, to see if what I am doing is correct, and I just went through one, and Silver Schools was picked as, to see if we had done everything correctly. We had no comments in that regard, we didn't have any issues in that regard, so there's a secondary satisfaction I think you can take from that, in that I think your audit is solid, and the only other thing I'd like to say is, I'd like to say thank you to the people in the business office particularly, because going through an audit is a pain, you know, and I would say where, but it's a public meeting. There's no way around it. You have, in our case, we have five people in here for a week, and you will have any times three, four, maybe even five people lined up asking Michelle questions in order, boom, 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 boom. You know, she can't get anything done that week at all. It's just impossible, because there's always somebody asking something. They treated that with respect and very good attitudes, and believe me, I've go places where that doesn't happen, so I appreciate it when it does happen. So I would like to express my appreciation to the accounting staff, saying, you know, Michelle and the people below her saying, because when we asked for something, they got it for us. It may have been just because they wanted to get us the heck out of there, but they at least they did get it for us, and I would like to express my appreciation as to that. And if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them now, or if you have them later, I'm pretty easy to find.
Questions from the board?
I guess you probably have copies of the report, because we didn't get them, we have not seen the audit report.
I have a staff of them in my office.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, thank you, and it's good news, so, thank you very much for your work, and we will probably put this on our next meeting agenda as an action item as well.
Please do. Because otherwise, then I have to yell at you next year if you didn't do it, so, please do, okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda, under presentations, is Priscilla Lucero with the Southwest of Mexico Council of Governments.
Good evening, you're a really easy group, you're not asking a whole lot of questions. I'm used to presenting in front of elected officials and being grilled all the time, so hopefully you have questions for me. But I am Priscilla Lucero, I am the director of the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments, and I've been the director now for about 15 years, but 15 years, but I've been with the organization 31 years. So I represent the areas of Cachan, Granti, Dalgo, Luna, I work for all those municipal governments, as well as county governments, and then we do have a few of the school districts that are members from the region as well. So how many of you are really familiar about what the Council of Governments do? I always get a lot of questions around, I know that you're there at these meetings, but I don't know that I really know what you do. So just kind of an indicator of people really don't understand. And so there's seven regions in the state of New Mexico, we do receive state and federal funding primarily to provide technical assistance to local governments within the region, and that also includes school districts, it includes water districts, it also includes soil and water conservation districts, and that's enough, as you can see. So currently, we're a staff of four, but we do everything in providing technical assistance from everything in transportation planning to legislative capital outlay or legislative issues, we also do anything around housing opportunities. I also provide a lot of technical assistance to communities and anything, if you have a new employee, and trying to figure out how process works, I do a lot of that as well, and pretty much everything and anything that could be a quality of life issue within the community. What I've specialized in in my career primarily has been around community development and providing a resource to be able to secure funding for the many different projects that we have accomplished in my tenure, so I've done a lot of grant writing in that respect. I'm also, I've done a lot with trying to secure funding from the state level, which is through the capital outlay process. I was fortunate this last year to work with the school district to be able to help secure some of that funding and really understanding the processes and how they work, from the local level all the way to the state level. So if you are not aware, the Silver Schools at one time used to be a member of the Council of Governments. I recently had a discussion with Ben and with Audi about maybe reconsidering if you all would be interested in participating as being a COG member. I believe in your packets, this little brochure's in there, it kind of explains about the different COGs and what they're doing, but I will have to say that each COG is unique in its own sense. The way I work may be very different from another region, because I really like to be heavily involved, if I can provide that technical assistance, I'm going to, whatever I can do to try to help improve the community is kind of my goal. So you also have in your email attachment is kind of an agreement of some of the services that we provide, keeping in mind that we're only a staff of four, trying to provide a lot of services to a lot of communities. But I think one of the benefits is that when you've had this many years involved in doing an occupation like this, is that you have gained a lot of knowledge, and so a lot of times when you have new people, that allows you that opportunity. So with that being said, I'd really like to kind of hear from you if there's anything that I can answer in regards to any questions you may have, but also know that I'm involved in every aspect of trying to improve quality of life from economic development standpoint that impact the schools in maybe an indirect way. So with that, I'll open it for questions, if you have any.
Questions from the board?
I guess for me, I just, can you give me an example or tell me what the difference, hi, by the way, would be, you know, what would be the advantage of us joining? I mean, what would be the difference in us being a member versus where we're at now? I guess, because it's what, it's $400 annually, which isn't a lot for what you do, but I guess for us specifically.
So, and I'll just use the example where I worked with Ben last year in developing the capital outlay, I really did that for the benefit of the community. I really, you know, even though you were not members, I took it upon myself anyway to be able to help, just because I'm not going to lose an opportunity that can help community in that way. And what it really does is helps me develop some membership monies to allow me to match the state dollars, then the federal dollars that I receive. Unfortunately, from a state perspective, the state is, has reduced our dollar amount from what we received in state appropriation, which is under House Bill 2, and so we've been reduced from about $125,000 to $84,000. And the only thing right now that's been our livelihood in keeping us alive has been when the governor implemented the executive order, then many of the funding agencies require that, depending on the outcome of an audit as an example, whether you can receive the monies, if you have, say, for example, a specific audit finding, or if you're non-compliant with that executive order, then I can step in and serve as a fiscal for that. So just as an example, since that took place in 2013, we have implemented over $7 million of projects just in this region that we would have not received if I wouldn't have been a fiscal agent. So those are a couple of the examples, and I will say that most of my work has been around really the local government aspect, but we are doing things that help improve and increase, as you look at the numbers of students, and involved in other activities. I mean, I've done career days, I've done capital projects, and making sure, schools are kind of unique when it comes to the capital process, if a, if an allocation is given to the entity directly outside of the public education department. And so if we're not aware of those processes, then we can lose that funding, it's just unique, and that happened to us a couple of years ago with Cobre schools, and so we were able to remedy that, just because we knew the process. I do capital improvement planning processes, I'm very familiar with the funding mechanisms, if you have a need that maybe we could partner on to be able to secure funding in those different aspects. So I can't, you know, and here's the thing with any municipality, county organization, if I don't know what your needs are, and if I can't, you know, if I don't know, then I can't be helpful. So I've started kind of giving Ben some grant opportunities that I'm forwarding to him, because maybe there's just something that could be a benefit to you. And something that we're doing very new, and this has been in the last couple of years, is that not only is the Council of Governments a government entity, it's also a nonprofit. So some of the things that we've been able to do is secure funding from foundations, and then you use our nonprofit status to be able to do a need or commute a need in your school district, as an example. So we've done that. As an example, in Lortsberg, we actually received money on behalf of the city of Lortsberg for the Union Pacific Railroad to do some Main Street improvements in the community. We're doing that for another entity, where we received $20,000 to do, to help with the regional workforce. So there's a couple of examples. Did that help, Michelle?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Priscilla, it says in here, provide training that will benefit the membership. What kind of training will you provide that will benefit the membership, I guess being the schools, correct? And my second part of the question is, in your region, how many schools are members?
So right now, as far, let me start with that first, the schools that are members right now are Deming Schools, Cobre Schools, and Lortsberg Schools. Those are the three school districts currently. With regards to training, some of the things that I've done specifically with schools, especially in the Columbus area, have been working with some of the teachers there and just kind of teaching them the basics of grant writing, because they want to do more things in their community. With that, I really like to teach a lot about open meetings requirement, understanding financial management, understanding state processes, federal processes, how do I make it work so that whatever it is your community need, how do we become creative so that we can actually look at the bigger picture and have that impact? Because a lot of times what I see is that we're so used to being in our, in our specific line of work, we don't see the connectivity that comes from the outside, and so I can bring that expertise in saying, okay, well, if you're doing this specific thing, let's tap into this, and let's work with the town of Silver City, as an example, they can apply for funding to do this, if we do this. So there's some examples.
So could a teacher, if we are a member, for example, could a teacher, or a coach, or an administrator, could they come to you and say, I need some help in writing a grant for this program, or we need money for this? Or we need money for this, can you write a grant for that? Is that part of the membership?
That's a part. And I just have to say it and be a friend about it. It just depends on the timing. But if anytime anybody wants to write something and you want me to review it, I can give you the demographics. We actually do that as well. We provide the demographics and we've done assessments with regards to, you know, using the demographic data to enhance an application. Because a lot of times when we're doing a grant application, again, we're focused on what we're doing, but not really looking at what's going, what's happening outside of the community. So an example of that would be, example would be when I've done fire grants, people don't know what the critical infrastructure is within their community to be able to enhance their application. So I can come back and say, well, if we have, if we have 12-inch pipelines carrying natural gas and crude oil, then, then we have more of a potential of a hazard, therefore allowing that they really start to recognize what the need is in your community. So as you move forward, and I really don't have a, a good understanding of what all you expect, you know, what are some of your needs? But I think assessing those needs can then say, well, here's a partnership where if you need to rehabilitate something, is there a way to do with that? Sometimes with the grant programs that we have under funding agencies, is that if you partner up with the local government as an example, and if it's a, if it's a school that's primarily like a free meal, yes, then that can open up an opportunity to fund something that's within low and moderate income levels. And so that's one way of just defining the need to the state to be able to get monies. So it just depends, there's just a lot of creativity around it, but that, that's kind of what I do.
Thank you.
Is that helpful?
Yes.
Other questions?
So just to be clear, so if there were opportunities, you would help us to identify those opportunities, but then you would kind of, it sounds like you would prefer us take the grant writing with your guidance, but for us to have someone designated here within our...
I think it just depends, because like for me, I have my, my grant season that are the big ones that I do for the local governments. But I do have staff people that help me with the smaller ones with the foundations. And I don't want to come in unless I know, like if I knew specifically what the timing of it is. But if it's something simple, we don't have a problem doing that. I will say that if we're going to use my nonprofit status for that, then I do have to charge a fee at least for, for the auditing piece of that money that I'm carrying into, into my books.
So that fee goes beyond the $400 membership, or is that inclusive?
No, that's, that's, that's not inclusive, it's an additional fee. And usually what I do is that I base it on how much is the grant. If, if the grant is like a few hundred dollars, I'm not going to worry about that. But if it, if it starts to escalate in price where now we have additional auditing requirements, or we have to do all this additional monitoring and compliance, then that's something else. If it's coming to you, then, then that's a different story. Because if I'm using my nonprofit because it has to come to a nonprofit, then, then again, it just varies from, from situation to situation. But I will tell you this, no matter what you decide today, that I'm going to continue to do whatever I need to do to, to help all of you in the schools and, and whatever I can, because it's about, it's about the kids and it's about the people of this community. I'll continue to do that no matter what.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I just would like Ben to expand on what she helped you with, what we were able to accomplish.
So the capital outlay project she's talking about is the $40,000 that we received from the state government to work on moving, creating a fiber network here that's more resilient in case someone hits the pole again by silver buying takes down five schools. But in addition, I kind of expanded on what she was saying with the nonprofit. When I received my pre-4 grant, I was talking with Bruce Ashburn because PNM has large grants available. The schools are not eligible to apply for those grant funds because we're not a nonprofit. If we partnered with them for the nonprofit, one, for example, the LED lighting, we could have applied to PNM for a grant that would have covered our portion of the LED lighting. And, and if we received it, the LED lighting would have cost us like 10% of what we actually paid. And so there's things that we're able to do because of their nonprofit status. And, and she's been sending me grants the last couple of weeks, multiple grants every day. And, and so there's places like that where it would be handy because if we can't access those monies any other way, we'll get good projects that we can collaborate with them if they're a fiscal agent, then it's a big help to us because otherwise we're missing out on that money.
Right. Thank you.
And something, Priscilla, I didn't realize, and I've known you and worked with you in the past, and, and that was something I didn't realize that there was membership in that. I think that just speaks to, to you and, and how you, your personality, how you operate, you're willing to help whether somebody is a member or not. And, and so I appreciate that work that you've done, not only for myself, but for, for Ben and the district in the past as well.
And so I, and I, one, one thing that I'm currently working on, and I will be until Sunday next week, and I want to kind of run this by a funding agency, we did this specifically with local governments, and I'd like to kind of carry that on with school districts. But I will tell you that those school districts that, that have a membership are going to have first pick, right? And so what we did with local governments is that we actually received $250,000 to help local districts implement. We did LED lighting audits, and then we did, we actually did the improvements to one facility for each one of the local governments. And so they, we divided that pot and then, and then we were able to help. So my, my next step is to, is to work with that funding agency to consider doing it with school districts. Because no matter where we go, that, that's an issue. And because we are really benefiting because of the PNM energy rebates, it was a huge, we've won a national award for it, we're now receiving an award next week for that project as well. And so in my discussions with the, with the federal agency is trying to implement that with the school. That's my goal. And so I continue to look for creative ways to be able to offset the costs for cities and counties and, and as well as school districts because it's not getting any easier on any of us, the reality is. For me, for now, you know, I, I know I'll be around for, for, you know, as long as, you know, we, we never know what's going to happen with the change in administration, right? And again, we never know if the money's going to decrease because of where we are in the, in the budget, they could pull that money at any time. So those are just things that have been a reality, and I've been told that since my first year, which is in 1987, and I'm still here. So that just goes to show, there's always those what-ifs, right? But nonetheless, I will continue to support you in whatever way I can.
If I may, I, I'd like to just say that, that Priscilla has absolutely been here every time we've needed her. I mean, when people say that they're a phone call away, sometimes that's true, sometimes that's just being nice and courteous, not with her. She's sincere, and she means it. And I've seen her at Grand County Prospectors Day, up in the legislature, and working hard on behalf of the entire region. And so I just take my hat off to you for everything you do, and I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. A lot of hard work. But I enjoy it, and that's, that's the best part of it, I enjoy it.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Priscilla.
Mr. President, is it permissible to make one comment about Priscilla's presentation that she's forgotten?
Certainly.
When we were, when the school district was a member of the Southwest Council of Governments, Priscilla and the council helped the school district secure monies to develop that park out at Cliff across from the school. The land was donated, but the Southwest Council of Governments was instrumental in securing funds to develop that area for the school district.
Thank you.
I think it was New Mexico Parks Recreation.
Right. And I did forget about that.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening on our information and presentations is the SCEA. Welcome, Ms. Bustillos.
I've been down a little bit. Okay. Well, I'd like to welcome our new Associate Superintendent. We met with him on Tues, no, Wednesday.
Thursday.
Thursday. Okay. When we're on break, you know, it's just everything kind of comes together as one big, long day. So we did meet with the new Associate Superintendent as part of our collective bargaining process. And we're kind of having to put that on hold so that he is able to catch up with all of the things that we had been working on. Because I think this is your, like, 12th day or something?
11th, well, who's counting?
Right? So we do look forward to working with him and, and continuing our desire to keep the lines of communication open. I wasn't able to report in June because I was out of town with some students. And, you know, we had a crazy end to the school year with issues that were brought up because of lack of communication. And working with colleagues and staff, you know, we've all learned some things. And so we continue to want to have those lines of communication remain open or build on them. Because most of the time, and I've said this before, that's where the issues arise from, is the lack of communication. So again, we continue to want to build upon that. And I hope I say this right, Klauff, right? Okay, Mr. Klauff is really open to discussion and having those lines of communication open between our collective bargaining unit and the administration and the rest of the staff. So we're looking forward to that. We did have people message us through our Facebook, employees specifically, who were concerned about the approval of the dress code policy. Because there wasn't, they felt as though the articles that were shared didn't offer enough guidance. And so it was my reassurance that that would be explained during the first couple of days there that we all meet as a district, so that there is some clarification about what is acceptable, is this going to be something that is up to each individual work site? So I told them to just be patient and wait for those first couple of days so that we can get more information, and to ask questions there, or to forward them to me, and I will ask the questions. And also, while I was out of town, I think in the same meeting, there were still concerns because I'm not sure where the lack of information is coming from about concerns for where the pay for the, the resource officers, the security officers would be coming from. And again, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I, I wasn't able to answer. And so I just said, you know, read the paper, read the announcement that comes out, you know? I'm sure that there will be more explanation about your concerns for that. And it was, again, just something that had come up, not really related to the things that we do, but just concerns that people have that they feel they can't ask. So that's part of our job is to work to get clarification for our staff and our community as well. So we will meet again for collective bargaining in August after the first few weeks of school as they get going, and we'll move on from there. So. Questions, comments, or concerns?
I would just say I wanted to express my gratitude. I was a part of that trip across the ocean, and we went to a lot of different countries. It was an amazing trip, and it's a lot of responsibility for the instructors that take that on, to take care of parents and children.
Yeah, it was an adventure.
And so I just wanted to express my gratitude. It was an amazing experience for kids. I was watching my kids take it in and, and just for us as adults to take it on, it was amazing. And so those opportunities are rare when they come up, and when someone's willing to take those on, I just was very appreciative for the experience.
Thank you, and I hope you had a great time, because it was awesome.
Other questions or comments? Very well, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Next on our agenda this evening is information to the board, and first up is Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, members of the board, community members, just would like to take a moment to clarify, because apparently there's, there is some confusion about the armed security guards as to the number that we are planning on actually ensuring are armed. We currently have two personnel at the high school, Silver High School, that are retired police officers, law enforcement, and they will be armed themselves. The board last board meeting approved three additional security guard positions, and I will let Ms. McCain explain where the funding's coming from. But those three additional security guards will also be armed. So it will be, will be for a total of five security guards that will be armed within the district. There will be one additional person that is being paid out of the security guard line item, if you will. And the plans at the present time is for this person to be located at the gate to the entrance of Silver High School. Now that, of course, is subject to change. It might be somebody that is armed that is going to be there, that is still up for discussion. But I just want to clarify from last board meeting that there will be five armed security guards within the district here at Silver Consolidated Schools. Two will be at the high school. The plan is for one of them to be roaming between Silver High and La Plata, those two schools in particular. There will be another one that is going to be in this general area, Central Office, Stout, the preschool, La Plata and Silver High School. There will be another one that will be roaming between Harrison Schmidt, Sixth Street, and Jose Barrios. And there will be another one that is assigned to Cliff. I'm open for any questions.
Questions or comments from the board? And what I, what I'd like to, I guess, ask or state is, is I was confused after the last board meeting. I thought we had approved a total of three and, and not five, and so there was some confusion there, at least on my part. And so that's why I requested that we added as an action item on the meeting, on tonight's meeting as well. So we're, as a board, we're clear as a whole, is it three, is it five, is it four, is it seven? What, you know, what is it as a total? And because, and, and it may have just been myself, but I was, I felt confused on, or I left here thinking, okay, we're going to have three, and that was the total. So again, that's, that's on for action item later this evening as well. I guess in addition to that, I was also searching for additional information on, on, you know, we've got the guidelines from Palms and Associates that says, you know, the best practices. I think we've followed that so far to a T. But the other information I was looking for was, you know, is there some sort of baseline out there that says, if you've got a school building that's 30,000 square feet, is, do you need one armed security guard? Do you need two? Is, is one sufficient? Is two necessary? So I was looking for some kind of objective type data. Or, you know, was it based on population? Is it, if you've got a school building that houses 3,000 kids, you need two or three, you know, the recommendation? And that was something I was, I was kind of also hoping to get from the assessments that the Silver Police Department would, would provide us when we're, when we were looking at our, applying for that funding. And it's kind of like a scorecard, oh, this school is considered an A for security. So maybe we would think, okay, so maybe that's, we're good there, maybe we can not have a security guard at that particular school as a one-on-one, as opposed to if maybe a school got, oh, this is a, a D report card on our evaluation. You know, there's some things we can do infrastructure-wise, but maybe we should consider putting an armed guard there. So just to clarify for everybody, the board, the public administration, that's kind of where I was, I guess, confused after our last meeting, and, and would certainly like to have some more, I guess, discussion on that. Other questions or comments?
I think the comment, or the comment on your question regarding every- I think the comment, or the comment on your question regarding every building, every building is going to be unique in the fact that how many people have access to the building? Are all the doors available to be open for everyone or are they locked down at a certain time? How much surveillance does the building have? And what is actually in the building that you're gonna provide security for? So every, every, every school's gonna be unique to that. Which, how many entrances are the public able to use? What entrance are the students gonna use and what exits are they gonna use? All that, I think, has to be mapped out or identified in order to do a proper assessment after the infrastructure, construction is done to the schools that we've identified. Maybe we could do a separate, a secondary assessment because I know some of them are gonna get the buzzer system and the camera system down the road. But just to say, just because it's a 30,000 square foot building, we need five security guards, it really isn't accurate. There may not be anything in the building that you want to secure. Or every door is locked except the one door. So one security guard may be suitable because there's surveillance cameras looking at the other parts of the building. Does that make sense?
And that's, and I guess I, maybe with your expertise, Mr. Flores, and especially with your current employment situation, is there some sort of formula that you all use at Western New Mexico that says, okay, we need, we've got X amount of students, X amount of square footage, or independent buildings, we need to have X number of security guards? Is there some sort of formula out there that, that you use or is it?
We don't necessarily have a formula. I think it's just based maybe on my experience more than my expertise. But we identify problem areas. And if an area has a lot of foot traffic or there's a lot of people that are utilizing the space that aren't university students, we want to be at that, at that, at that building. For example, our housing units have surveillance cameras. So that eliminates the need to have an officer there all the time because we have an officer at the office that's looking at the entrance to Centennial Hall. And that camera is not violating anyone's privacy, but it's in the lobby and the front and doors of that building. So we have a clear view of who's coming in or who's leaving. If a TV's missing from the lobby, we're obviously gonna see somebody walk out the front and doors of the TV and we're gonna identify them coming in the front and doors, hopefully. But the surveillance cameras have helped us tremendously. I, I think with Latina Fiesta, big events that I coordinate the security, we just base it on the number of people that are gonna show up. And that's how we determine where the security guards are gonna be and how many are gonna be, how many guards are gonna be at that location. But I think for the purpose of the school, for Silver High example, we're gonna have the two or three entrances because we're gonna have SA, the opportunity school housed in that facility as well. And they want their own entrance, is that correct, Mr. Brown? They want their own access to?
Correct.
So we're gonna have to provide security at that location. And when students or people know, okay, we can go into this door, at this door, at this time or at this time, that's where we need the security guards or a camera. I think parents know that you can't access the drop-off and drive-in area during school hours because the gates usually locked. But students still come in, so I think ideally, we'd like to have someone there watching students come in. Maybe a student comes in with a big black bag during the summer or a trench coat or something, that something would raise a red flag. So we have to watch people coming in. That's, that's our concern as a security guard. Because obviously, that's a threat. They're gonna come into the school and do, do harm in the school. They're not gonna harm the school from outside the school, most times.
So what is that ratio that you use for your?
Well, you know, you know, the NCAA for athletic events, I want to say the ratio is, and I, I may be off by a few, but it's 300 to one. 300 spectators, we need one security officer. That's the ratio that the NCAA gives for athletic events.
And that was kind of the information, I guess, I was hoping to, like I said, either get from the police, say, report, but audit. Just, you know, was, was there some formula that we could use to help us make a decision on, on the number? And Mr. Brown, so you're saying if we had a total of five, we would have one, one that is in this area and central office and stout, there would be one at Cliff?
Correct. There's two currently at Silver High School. They will, they will stay at Silver High School. One of the two will be roaming between Silver High School and La Plata. And there's going to be one of the three new officers, security guards, that will be roaming, patrolling, if you will, between central office, stout, the pre-K building, still Silver High School and La Plata. So this general area. A second of the three will be at Harrison Schmidt, Sixth Street, Jose Barrios, patrolling that area. And then the third of the three will be at Cliff. And if I may elaborate a little bit more on the status of the security funding application, it's due February, or Friday, July 27th. We do have Captain Villalobos, who is currently working on it with Peter Lamardo, the security person for the district. They're still working on the templates and completing that information and speaking with Mr. Lamardo this afternoon. They have divided the schools and they're still working on them, but they're almost done. So when they get those to us, we will be meeting with Mr. Ward to determine more specifically infrastructure needs in the district that we will be applying for.
Other questions for Mr. Brown on armed security guards?
I do, I, one is just a generalized statement to realize that we're not trying to pick one school over another. We're trying to identify from those assessments we received where the greatest risk lies. And so clearly, every school's important to us. And so, but having said that, when we look at those assessments, we have to put into perspective where are the needs and try, you know, in an ideal world, we'd have an endless money tree in the backyard that kept growing the money and we don't have that. So we're trying to make, make ends meet, basically, and do the best we can with what we have. And to let people know safety's our priority while still working on the infrastructure opportunities, just to be clear. And, and I think a lot of the elementaries are doing a much better job at the single entrance. And we're working on some of those projects already this summer to help with some of those safety needs in addition to these changes. So just so that's clear for everybody. And then the second, the one question I actually had was tied to the security coordinator. And I know we had talked about how that might be rolled up here at the central office into a kind of a meshed position with multiple responsibilities. Where does that lie?
That's a perfect segue, Dr. Diaz, into the safety coordinator update, next on the agenda. Simply because we do not have the funding to be able to provide the security personnel, security guards, as well as a coordinator, we are not, and again, the board approved, depending on funding, if you recall, that coordinator position. And we feel that that is, the monies could be better spent at the, the actual security guard positions. And so I will be taking on supervision of the security guards with constant hotline, phone call access to Chief Flores as well as Chief Portillo if and as needed. They did give me their cell numbers, so better be ready.
I do.
Does that answer your question?
Thank you for taking that on.
Oh, sure.
In addition to your several responses.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Quick question I have for the, for the armed security officers, Mrs. McCain, that will all come out of operational budget, correct?
Yes, none of our other grants or fundings allow for any kind of provisions on armed security, so it would have to be out of our operational budget. The three that are currently on the payroll are on the operational budget already, so.
Okay, thank you.
Has there been any money for security that has trickled down from the state level or federal level? And if not, do you anticipate it?
For infrastructure, I've heard quite a bit about that, you know, and received emails as far as that's in the process. As far as salaries and security, in that case, no, I have not heard anything in that aspect.
I can tell you that there are additional opportunities for funding that are, that I've been notified regarding monies available from the federal government. But we have to have a certain level of match from the district in order for that to occur as well. And so that's something that I just forwarded to Ms. McCain and asked her for her due sense. We'll be discussing if that's even viable option at this point.
Would what we're already paying in salaries constitute a match?
No. It has nothing to do with salaries, it's more infrastructure type.
Priscilla, is that an opportunity for a nonprofit organization?
It could be. I haven't really seen anything come down the pipeline exactly under the federal government for that. But sometimes you can be really creative with regards to the match from in kind if you can figure out how that can work for the in kind, so be able to provide that. Some federal agencies are really good about allowing that. So we could, you can be creative on this, that's an opportunity. And I was just looking to see if I saw anything from the grant website that I would put up and see if there was anything on it. There's not, but it could be that it's something that's coming down through that ominous bill. And so hopefully, we're gonna tell them next week and read more about what's happening on the federal side of things, that maybe we can look and see what opportunities are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Very well, I think we're on to item C. Mr. Brown?
So the proposed graduation day for Silver High School, and again, I highlight and I stress, bold, underlying, proposed, because right now, nothing is set in stone. But what they're considering at this point for the week of May 12th through the 17th, 2019, on Sunday, May 19th, hold the baccalaureate. On Monday, May 20th, would be scholarship night. Tuesday, May 21st, would be senior night slash carnival. And Thursday, May 23rd, the actual graduation ceremonies at 7:30 on the football field. And one of the main reasons for that is the, due to the NMAA hosting state championships the weekend of the 17th, the reason for Thursday graduation date is due to Cobra and Deming holding graduation on Friday, the 24th. So again, these are just, this is more informational right now for, for the board to be in the know and to be pondering. There'll be more solid dates and information forthcoming. And Cliff would probably be the previous week, yes.
Questions or comments from the board?
But again, that's subject to change as well.
Very well, on to item D.
To give the district and the community an update, the LED lighting project, the district at this point, we're going to be sending the contractor a notice of default and making a claim against the performance bond.
Questions, comments from the board? Seeing none. Next on our agenda is Mr. Cliff, Associate Superintendent. Welcome.
Your first board meeting? First official.
First official, yes. We saw you last month.
Yeah. Mr. President, members of the board, Mr. Brown, Ms. Hernandez, members of the administrative team and members of the audience, thank you for this opportunity to provide you with information on what's going on in the transition. As was said earlier, this is only my 11th day on the job, so who's counting? But it's been really good. I've got to give Candy a lot of support because she's been great to transition, keep me up to speed with the information. There are three important topics I have to advise the board on tonight. First, last Wednesday, I sat on a conference call with PED regarding new graduation requirements for our incoming freshmen for this year that are pending. They are looking at alternate demonstrations of competes and alternate ways of graduation for this year's freshman class, which is a class of 2022, to be able to qualify for graduation in the state of New Mexico. On the conference call was Secretary Rakowski and went over the process that was being used. They had submitted the new proposed demonstration of competes for public comment and testimony from May 23rd to, to July 3rd. They reviewed those comments and they released last week with superintendents and assistant superintendents some of the findings and they are pending with the State Board of Education. Some of the things that've come out in discussion is looking at the possibility of using industry-recognized credentials, certificates as a means of alternative improvement of competency for graduation. Also, enlistment to the military, enrollment in college programs, and others as identified by the Department of Education, which will be forthcoming when they give us guidance, when it's finally approved by the board. The timeline is to be considered either in the late July or early August, so they get the information out to the, to the state school districts so they can start planning. But Secretary Rakowski said, you better start planning now so you have your plan in place with this incoming freshman class, you have it. So the plan on behalf of the district is for me to bring it to the administrative team's attention on Thursday at a meeting and for me to meet with them, because this will impact middle school as well, because they are talking about lowering some career readiness credentials in the next round of legislation to go down to as far as third grade in the next series of state regs with career readiness. So we'll meet with the middle school and high school administration on Thursday, bring up the speed on this. And once they finalize, it'll be released to the districts and I'll make sure that the board is advised along with Mr. Brown. Any questions on that? They pretty much are giving us guidance to get ready. So I think we've got a good plan in place to be able to address as it comes forward. Next on the, on the list is you have the boundary agreements for transportation with Animus Public in Lourdesburg for Red Rock and Seper areas. My understanding is those boards will be acting on them shortly if they already have not, because I could not remember the dates it was given to me by Sam. Figured out if Lourdesburg already had approved or Animus, but they have been agreed upon and will be act on by both boards, so I'm asking for approval for those. And also on the agenda for tonight, I've given you drafts of the handbook. I've also developed some documents that I emailed out, but I also have hard copies that I'll give to the board. So when we go to discuss this later on to address some of the questions that were brought up by the board, and hopefully this can help spur the conversation so we make sure we're meeting your needs. So I will give each member of the board copies of this.
Got a lot done in 11 days.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Brown didn't let me go come on the job snoozing, so we're okay. To give you the summary of the second document I gave you was the summary of the questions that were brought forward by all the board members. And I tried to address them in a systematic way that they were brought in, so that way we keep that as a working document so we make sure we address all concerns of the handbook as we proceed. Because I'm pretty sure anytime you make changes to the handbook, there's gonna be questions throughout the year either by board either by board members, administrators, community members. So that way we keep an accurate record, we make sure that we can address any concerns. Because anytime you make a change, you can think it's good on paper, but when you start to execute, you're going to make sure that we're doing the best practices and procedures so that way we meet the needs. So you can read that for guidance, and we can discuss that when you bring it up for a vote later. Any other further questions?
Questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, you're off the hook easy tonight, so far.
Mr. Brown told me I was going to be grilled tonight, but so good, I'm happy, so we'll be good, so.
Thank you.
I've got my time later, I know.
Very well, next on our agenda this evening is Mrs. McCain.
The one thing that I do have, and I mentioned it in our finance committee, is I did receive an approved operating budget for the 1819 school year from the public ed department. And it was as I submitted it to them, so there were no changes that I have need to make you aware of because they approved it as it stood. And so we're good to go for next year.
Questions from the board? Very well, thank you. Next on our agenda is the Board of Education, and first up is Finance Subcommittee Report.
Ms. Khan and I met with Michelle and Martha on Friday, went over the financials, which were pleasantly surprising, mostly because, correct me if I'm wrong, the increased number per student?
The SEG.
The SEG, and then also, was it those?
Forest reserve.
The forest reserve, that was unexpected, we received that in?
May.
May. So if you look at the comparison from 2017 school year to 2018 school year, we are still at 4% of operational budget in our cash carryover, I guess is what it's going to be hopefully sometime, once we can budget it.
Yeah, well, once the dust settles, right now, we're still dealing with conversations with the public ed department as far as our final closeouts on some of the grants and whether they'll allow some of the expenditures that we had. If not, they'll have to be general entryed over to the operational budget, so that could reduce the number, but not significantly.
So really, really good news. Much better than we thought it was going to be. But like you say, don't hold our breath, right? What were some other things we discussed?
Just continue making goals for the upcoming school year and keeping a good financial health of the district. So I want to commend you and your team for that. Looks really good. Quick question, so it looks like we're going to be right around 4% for the?
Yes.
Carryover?
Yes, 4% for the carryover.
Other questions or comments from the board? Very well, thank you. Next up under Board of Education is Safety and Security Subcommittee Report. Mr. Flores?
We have no report, we're not going to meet until everybody comes back from summer vacation.
Very well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Next on our agenda under Board of Education is our second reading of our transportation policies. And I'll go through these, read them by title. The first one is Policy Advisory Number 141, EE Transportation Services, EE-E Transportation Services, Transportation Service Provider Requirements. The second policy is Policy Advisory 142, which is titled EE Student Transportation, EEA-R Student Transportation, and EEA-E Student Transportation School Bus Incident Report. The third policy advisory is Number 143, and it's EEA Eligibility for Bus Transportation Walkers and Riders. The fourth policy advisory is Number 144, titled EEA-B. It's Special Education Student Transportation. The fifth policy is Policy Advisory 145, which is titled EEA-E Bus Driver Requirements Training and Responsibility. I apologize, the fifth item for second reading, Policy Advisory 145, EEA-E Bus Safety Program/EEAE-R Bus Safety Program Emergency Procedures. The sixth item for second reading is Policy Advisory 146, which is titled EEA-EA, Bus Driver Requirements Training and Responsibilities. This includes bus assistants and substitutes. The seventh policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 147, titled EEA-EB Bus Purchasing and Maintenance. The eighth policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 148, titled EEA-EC, which is Student Conduct on School Buses. The ninth policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 149, which is titled EEA-FA Transportation to Student Activities/EEAFE Transportation to Student Activities Responsibilities. The 10th policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 150, titled EEA-FB, and that is Extracurricular Activity Event Driver Requirement, and this policy is being omitted. The 11th policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 151, which is titled EEA-G Student Transportation in Private Vehicles. The 12th policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 152, which is titled GDF Support Staff Hiring. The 13th policy for second reading is Policy Advisory 153, titled JJJ Extracurricular Activity Eligibility. The 14th policy for a second reading is Policy Advisory Number 154, titled JKD Student Suspension/Expulsion. The 15th policy for a second reading is Policy Advisory Number 155, titled JLCD Administering Medicines. And the 16th policy for second reading is Policy Advisory Number 156, titled JLCG Do Not Resuscitate Orders/JLCGR Do Not Resuscitate Orders. Those members of the board are our policies for a second reading this evening, and we will have action on those policies later in the meeting. Any questions or comments?
I have some questions.
Yes, Dr. Deuce?
In a couple of these policies, it states that there's, you know, every semester, there's going to be a drill on the bus or different things like that that are actually written in the policies. And so we have all these policies, but I'm just wondering who's in charge of making sure that we're actually following through on those exercises? Is it the, for the buses, I'm assuming it's the people we contract out, so we don't really have to worry about that. But who's ensuring we're in compliance with all of that, I guess, is the question.
That would be Mrs. Drata.
And I would say although the bus contractors may not be, I guess that information would be transferred down to the bus contractors so they're aware of the policies as well. Any other questions or comments?
And so she keeps track of who's up to date on whatever those requirements are for drivers, whether they're?
That's part of her responsibilities, yes.
Okay, okay.
Other questions or comments from the board? Very well. Next on our agenda is Board Comments, and just got a few comments. I'd like to, I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. And I know it's less than a month away that I think we start up school again, so it's just around the corner. And so I think people are starting to gear it up outside of the, maybe my students at home, but enjoy what's left of your summer, because it will be over here pretty quick. Ms. Montenegro?
Well, we are enjoying the rain, right? It's been a blessing for our state. It was just dry everywhere, from the north to the south and east to the west. So enjoying the rain, that means not much swimming, unfortunately. So lots of kids cooped up and trying to figure out how to expend that energy. But yeah, like Mr. McMillan said, school's right around the corner. An exciting new year. I don't think very many people are thinking about it yet, kids, anyway, parents might be. But I just hope that the, well, I want to thank all of the employees that have to work around the calendar and getting ready, you know, gearing up for the next year and implementing new things and making sure everything's ready to go whenever the kids come. And I know the teachers go in early, long before they're supposed to, to get the classrooms ready and get ready for the kids. So I just want to thank everyone for their tireless work that they do to educate our kids and just make Silver Schools great.
Thank you. Mr. Khan?
I just told everybody's enjoying their summer. I want to welcome Mr. Clough to the district. Again, what's left of the summer, enjoy. My kids are debating whether or not they're excited to go back or stay home. My wife is excited for them to go back. Again, I just want to thank all the year-long employees that are committed to putting everything together for the next upcoming school year. And then I want to also just commend all the activities that go on during the summer that keep our students occupied and busy. My hat's off, goes to everybody that coordinates that, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Deuce.
I just wanted to apologize for my absence last meeting and just say that it was really well worth the experience that we had and say thanks again. Again, I think those kids, it was a chance of a lifetime for both adults and kids. And so an amazing experience that we had, 10 days and tons of different places. In fact, Ms. Bustillos asked that adults and students alike keep a journal, and I was really appreciative because it went so fast that I don't know that I could have named all the countries I went to at first. So looking back, it's been good, it's been good. But definitely a great experience. I will just say, I know I missed the last meeting, but I know that there was a presentation and some more information about OHS, and I think that was very helpful for me. And so I just, I emailed Mr. Coker specifically, but I was very appreciative to see more information out there. I think it put a lot of our minds at ease. So I wanted to say thank you for that and that I did see it even though I wasn't here. And just moving forward with the new school year, I think it's important for us to just set high goals as a board. I think we've been doing that on an annual basis, I want to make sure we continue to do that. And definitely, as just individual members of this community, we want to continue to work to make the school district a better place. We have great kids, we have great teachers, great staff, but we need to take advantage of the opportunities we have and work moving forward. So I'm excited. Kids on any given day have a different opinion about that, but I'm very excited to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Just a question, maybe not a comment, but you know, when I drive around the schools, I notice, maybe we can improve this or improve that. And I appreciate the construction that's getting done at the main parking lot for students and surrounding parking lot. I see the construction crews there working, and I know the rain has hampered construction because it's hampered construction at Western. And I know the parking lot's going to look good, and I know that maybe this year, we can address, you know, the issues at the parking lot, the speeding. And we don't want a student to get run over or injured or anything like that. But my question maybe is to Mr. Brown is, you know, I drive by La Plata when I go home sometimes, and I see that drop-off and pickup area that probably costs thousands and thousands of dollars on the north side of the complex there, that is fenced in and gated and has the speed bumps throughout the area to slow traffic down. And I think that was a well-built area, but there's weeds growing on it because it's not utilized. And I think that's something that should be looked at because that offers a drop-off in the pickup area for students and parents. Instead of just allowing all the students to open the doors of La Plata and come out the way they do now, and they walk onto Silver Street, the sidewalk, you know, we funnel them in and out of that area because I think that's a safety concern. And I don't remember if I was on the board when we had that built, but I know it costs a lot of money. And for it not to be utilized, I think it's a shame. Maybe there's a reason they don't utilize it. But in speaking to, in speaking to some of the, I guess, staff at La Plata is that it's hard to keep the students from going out the front doors, but I don't see how hard it is because I know Mr. Mendoza, when he was a principal there, he controlled that. And I think if parents know from the beginning of the school years, you can't pick up your kid off of Silver Street. You have to go wait in line, and I know parents have things to do like everybody else does, but there's probably four or five lanes of traffic up there that cars can go in and come out. It won't need to be that much of a wait. And it'll eliminate everybody coming out of two or three entrances from the main school because that's what it was constructed for. I think maybe if we collaborate with Silver City Police Department and say, "We're going to stop people. If you stop and pick up a student off of Silver Street," then the public gets the message that they just can't drop off and pick up there, and they have to utilize that area. If we're looking at safety, that's one of the things we should look at, is using resources that we already have. Because it is fenced in and gated, and I think that's just my perspective, but I may be totally off base.
It's hard for me to answer because I don't have an answer, to be honest with you. I can, I'll definitely visit with Mr. Alvarez about it. I saw Ms. Bustillos had her hand up, so maybe she has some information.
Well, because, you know, we have to do morning duty about every other week or so at the school because of, you know, we lost the sixth grade and we went to the elementary. And the times that I had the North Lot duty in the morning or the afternoon, I've been asked to count how many cars or parents come through there. And it's probably anywhere from 13 to 16 cars per day, per shift, I guess. And when the sixth grade was there, it was more because there were obviously more kids there. Parents were a little more concerned when their students are a bit younger and whatnot. But it's been my experience there, that there's probably 13 to 16 cars that come by and use it. So they come in through Silver Street, they go through the parking lot, and I don't know, I live here, so I don't know the names of the streets. So they come out and they either turn to the left to get back onto Silver Street, or they turn to the right and cut through those neighborhoods on, I don't know. There's two neighborhoods that go right through there that go north and, you know, can come out on Fowler, or again, go back around through Silver Street. But it would be the same amount of congestion, I think, you know, but I'm not a traffic professional, I don't know. But it would still be the same amount of congestion, having people to come in and wait in the parking lot because parents get there, you know, at 2:45 or release at 3:30 to pick up their kids. And, you know, there's still going to be a lot of congestion. It's, you know, maybe it's safer, maybe it's not. If you've been in a parking lot like that, you know that people get like parking lot rage and, you know. So, but, you know, over the year that I've had duty out there, like I said earlier, you know, it's anywhere from 13 to 16 cars on a good day, you know. So it's, it's a nice parking lot, but, you know, it could be some work. You know, our custodians are crew there, they have a vast expanse of property to maintain. And with the three of them there, it's a bit much for them, you know, and how they disperse it and who gets what and all of that. So, you know, like you said, Mr. Brown talking to Mr. Alvarez would probably give you a better idea as far as, you know, from his administrative perspective. But from a teacher perspective, it's a lot of. But from a teacher perspective, it's, it's a lot of time staring at the trees.
Thank you.
I understand that. And I think that's, when I pick up my daughter at La Plata, both sides of Silver Street are lined up on the sidewalk. You can't find a parking spot. And it's because kids come out and they just go down that little grassy hill and get into their cars. People are stopping in the lane of traffic while their kids get in or dropped off in the morning. Parents, and I'm one of them, I'll go park in the visitor parking lot and wait for my daughter to come out. So, if you eliminated all that, those cars are going to have to be forced to go to that north parking lot and go in and come out. And I think that's where Silver City PD comes in and stops people and say, you know, the curbs parked is going to be painted yellow. You can't park here. Even you can make it a fire lane or something. Then they know you can't drop off or pick up. Or you put signs up, signings. And I've seen it at bigger schools in other cities that says, no drop-off or pickup area. And they know, proceed to the north lot. I think it's just something we should look at because it's already there. It doesn't, it doesn't cost us anything. And it's, it's concrete. There are some weeds on there. The custodian, they could spray weed eater on it and it'll come out. Just something to look at. Food for thought. Thank you.
Sir, again.
Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening is open public comments. Mrs. Hernandez, have you received any requests to speak in open public comment?
No, sir.
Very well. The next item on our agenda is action items. And first up is our consent agenda. One A, financial reports. One B, budget adjustment requests. One C, award of bids and proposals. One D, donations. And one E, conflict of interest disclosures. Mrs. McCain?
Okay. Beginning with our financial reports, our checks written in the month of June total a whopping $6,186,432.63. That number is reflecting the fact that we pay out all of our contracts for the employees' summer pay. We don't dispense the checks, but we do go ahead and run those expenditures so that they are in the current, the correct fiscal year. So, that, you know, shows the teachers pay for June, July, and August, and that's why it's highly inflated. Our budget adjustment requests, I have three that I am seeking approval for today. Our idea B, regular budget and also the preschool budget. The regular budget is $761,710. And the idea B preschool budget is $20,214. And the only reason that those weren't in our initial budget is Ted was being shorthanded as they are. They did not get the applications out to our sped department in time for them to get the information to me, to get the budgets in, in with our regular budget. And so, this is just the fallout from shorthandness at Ted. And then also, we have another budget adjustment request, which is our Carl Perkins grant that we received last year. By nature of the fact that we received it in June and all of the activities that it entails covering happened in July, we have to ask for budget approval to pay for those items in July, any of the carryover. And we received an initial budget of $11,275, of which we had $7,556 left that we are going to spend in July to finish off that grant. And so, we're asking for budget approval for that. Awards for bids and proposals, we have none. Donations, we have none that I'm aware of. And we don't have any conflict of interest disclosure forms today.
Very well. Questions or comments from the board? I would like to thank Mrs. McCain. I had several questions and she was very prompt and detailed in her response. So, thank you very much for your answering my many questions. Very well. So, we have, for action, our consent agenda A, one A, B. A and B, I believe, are the only two that we have. I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda one A and B.
Mr. President, I make a motion to approve consent agenda A, one A, and B.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That motion passes. Next on our action items, under consent agenda two, transportation. Do we have any bus driver under A, B, activity drivers, or C feeder routes? Seeing none. We will move on to action item B, consideration and approval of armed security guards. Any additional information or questions from the board? Or I guess information from the administration or questions from the board?
Correct me if I'm wrong. That's already included in the budget we submitted.
Yes.
And so, we're talking about, just to clarify too, and I would, I would ask that when a motion is made, that we make them quantify the number of armed security guards that we're looking to approve this evening in total for the district.
My only question that came to me over the last month is, have we thought about what our insurance is going to increase? Or have we talked to anybody or have we?
Palms and Associates said that there's not going to be any change currently because they are kind of scrambling to keep up with, you know, all of this. As long as we follow the provisions and guidelines that they gave us, then right now, there's not going to be an increase. As time progresses and situations occur, then we'll...
Okay.
Maybe it should be a decrease because we're trying to make ourselves... It's like a good driver perks of insurance. Propose that.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none. I will entertain a motion for action item B, consideration and approval of armed security guards.
I will make a motion to approve the hiring of three additional armed security guards, which will add to the three other security guards already employed by Silver Schools, two of whom, who are retired officers, will also be armed in the future. Bring in a total of five armed security for the Silver Schools. With the hiring of three additional. Is that clarification enough?
And one unarmed.
One unarmed that's already on the books.
Right. But a total of six.
Total of six, but five armed.
What we're talking is for armed security guards. So, I'm hearing a total of five armed security guards?
Yes.
Very well. We have a motion for, to hire five armed security guards for the district. Do we have a second?
May I clarify? Hiring three additional security guards, but they will be, they will be armed, but there will be a total of five armed security guards.
That's the, the motion that we have is for a total of five.
Okay.
But we're only hiring newly.
Only need to hire three additional.
Because technically, that's what this motion is, is to create that line item, correct? Like for positions?
It exists already. It's just to move those bodies into those positions.
So, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I would just like to say one thing on that note. I think it's good that we're doing the armed officers. I would just like to, like us to continue to look for opportunities for security opportunities with infrastructure, given that it looks like there's going to be funding out there and the fact that that's not a recurring cost like salaries and those types of things are. So, that'd be my only request.
Any other discussion or comments? And I would agree. I think we always, I mean, ideally, we would want to put probably an armed security guard in every school building, but the reality of our budget doesn't permit that. And so, you know, I think moving forward, again, we're going to need to look at our enrollment. We're going to need to look at a lot of things and, and just be fiscally responsible. And, you know, if we find down the road, maybe five is not enough or five is too, too much, that we make those appropriate adjustments as well. Any other discussion? Seeing none. We've got a motion and a second to approve the hiring for the district or for a total of five security guards. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That motion passes. Thank you for clarifying that, everyone. Next on our agenda this evening is action item C, consideration and approval of the asbestos management plan notification. And I believe in our board book, there is... It was actually under information. Under Mr. Rogers, information to the board. So, I'll entertain a, a motion to approve item C, consideration and approval of the asbestos management plan notification.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. Is it, Dr. Deas?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of action item C, consideration approval of asbestos management plan notification signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion passes. Next on our agenda is consideration approval of Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments membership. Any additional information, questions from the board? I will entertain a motion to approve item D, consideration approval of Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments' membership.
Mr. President and members of the board, I move that, I move forward to considering action item D, consideration and approval of Southwest New Mexico Council of Governments' membership.
Have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Would just like to say, I think approving this item will, although it's a $400 fee, I think the work that Mrs. Lucero does is outstanding, whether we're members or not. And I think showing that we want to help support her as much as we can will benefit us all. So, with that, any other discussion or comments?
I would just add that her $400 membership has already been repaid at a hundred times over with the $40,000 that Ben received last year. So, has a good return.
Money well spent.
Very well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our action items is E, consideration approval of the transportation boundary agreement number one between Silver Consolidated Schools and Lordsburg Municipal Schools for the 2018-2019 school year. Any additional information from administration on that? I believe that is also on our board packet under number one. Very well. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. I, all members in favor of approving item E, consideration approval of transportation boundary agreement number one between Silver Consolidated Schools and the Lordsburg Municipal Schools for the 2018-2019 school year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That motion passes. The next action item on our agenda this evening is F, consideration and approval of the transportation of boundary agreement number two, Silver Consolidated Schools and the Lordsburg Municipal Schools for the 2018-2019 school year.
I so moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All, all those in favor of approving item F signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That motion passes. Next on our action items this evening is G, consideration and approval of the transportation boundary between Silver Consolidated Schools and Animus Public Schools for the 2018-2019 school year. Entertain a motion to approve if there's no additional information.
So moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of approving action item G signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none. That motion passes. Next on our agenda is item H, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools' parent slash student handbook for the 2018-19 school year. Mr. Clough, do you have some additional information to discuss with the board?
The email I sent out with that trying to address all the board questions that you guys can look at and consider. They're pretty straightforward changes that were brought forward. So, if there's any questions, I do have an answer.
Members of the, all members of the board have had an opportunity to review that handbook. Any additional questions, clarifications, comments on the handbook, student-parent handbook?
I have some questions and I apologize. I didn't get them to you in email before like you requested, so my apologies. I think mine were similar to Mike's when he talked about it. The top of some of the pages there was carryover. I saw your email that...
Formatting.
Like where it says, LaDon, so at top of page three, although they're not numbered, it says, and I'll go to it right now. It had LaDon Lewis, the secretary, up there right next to Mr. Brown's name, if you'll look at it. I don't know if you can see it, but if you scroll down the page there. And Mike had alluded to that same issue when he saw it. You know what part I'm talking about?
Like a formatting issue.
It's a formatting issue more than anything.
And we may need to move this from Word into a publisher. So, the formatting can be addressed because it could be different in publisher. We'd have to look at spacing and like that before we send it to printing.
Yeah, so just to make sure.
It may have just been the way, this PDF actually doesn't have hers over there.
It doesn't actually when I'm looking at it here.
Yeah. So, I don't, maybe it's just the way it got sent.
Yeah, because it may have been just the email itself because on here tonight, it's not popping up like that. But that was, so that was one thing. And then, so I just, a couple of them, one, you go to page five and hopefully it's the same page there. When you go to policy regulations under academics, see if I can make sure it's the same page here. I was just curious, are we going to stay with the four-point grading system or are we going to go to the five-point like we had discussed or is that something?
That was going to be addressed at each building level when they do the addendum because we do have to notify parents by our policy of what the grading scale is for each building. We do not do a five-point grading scale for elementary, but we do do a five point for high school. So, like, for example, Jose Barrios sends out a notice of the grading system attendance and like that. So, each individual building would have to notify them with those processes. This is to, intended the handbook is to address district-wide, then each individual building having to address the issues that are different because we did not know exactly how to address that with the difference between elementary and secondary with regards to a set rating scale.
Okay, so, because right now, we're on a four-point, aren't we? On a four-point?
There's been talk at, at high school with Mr. Coker about doing advanced honors.
And then, with that being said, so that answered one of my other questions. So, this will be basically Silver Consolidated Schools generalized handbook. And then, there's going to be a school-specific handbook in addition?
Well, the way it reads in our policy, we have to notify parents of certain things. So, whether it's done by handout or like, for example, the attendance policy, some of our teacher or some of our school, schools send out a checklist for attendance processes. It just requires in our policy to notify them. So, whether they do it by a separate addendum to address those issues or whether they do it like through written notifications like some of our do with a parent signature or just notifying them, that gives the administrators flexibility to deal with their clientele and their ability. the flexibility to deal with their clientele in their buildings and be able to address them in those ways.
Okay, okay, so, all right, so I guess, um, then what I would expect from Silver High then is to know when they clarify what it's gonna be, if it's a five point versus a four point, that would be included in this, the high school specific.
Yeah, so it's one of the requirements we have in policy of the, of the building grading scale, yes.
Okay, so that, and I'm sorry, I just made a list, and I apologize, I didn't, I don't think most of these require any reprint, that's the good news. Um, and then, um, if anyone else has anything along the way, please interject, but on page seven, for student absence and requests for homework, so this, for me, is an area that I really harped on a lot, um, because what I encourage my kids to do, um, even my six-year-old, is I say, "Okay, if, we're gonna be gone for something," and sometimes it's not illness, sometimes we're leaving for travel or something, "It's your responsibility, whether it's a school-sponsored activity or not, to get your homework, and I want you to be a planner, and if you're gonna be juggling school and these extracurricular activities, you need to get your homework, and if you know you're gonna be gone Thursday, start asking Monday." Or ask on Friday, because that gives you some time over the weekend if you have a chance. Sometimes teachers don't have it ready yet, I understand that, my husband's a teacher, um, and so if they don't have it ready, I think it's fair to say, "You know, I don't have that quite ready for you yet." But if you have an idea of what that assignment's gonna be, I've asked my kids to ask for it in advance, and the answer they've been given in the past, um, and I think we were working on this, has been, um, "If you get your homework early, then it has to be back to me the next day." And, and the reality should be, if I'm asking for it on Monday, then I should be able to have the day I still need it off, in my opinion, if I'm gonna be gone Thursday, and I take it, and I come back Friday and had questions, I should be able to ask those questions and have the one day to turn it in. But I don't think we're teaching our children to be proactive, or planners, or try to really be accountable and take control of their own education, if what we say is, "Well, if you take it right now, it's due tomorrow." Because sometimes you can figure it out on your own, and sometimes you can't, sometimes you need the help. But it, basically, I'm asking my kiddo to be proactive, and she comes home fighting me, saying, "Mom, I'm not gonna do that, because it's due the next day, and then I didn't get any instruction, I'm not sure if I'm gonna know how to do it." I just don't think that makes any sense. So, my request would be, um, I don't know if it needs to be in the handbook or not, it's really, it's a generalized statement in here, it says each school will establish a process, um, it's gonna be school-specific is basically what this says, um, which is fine, I think, for the generalized handbook, but I think if we're talking school-specific, I would really encourage us, you know, I'm not trying to put any teacher on the spot, because if it's not ready, it's not ready. Um, and the other issue that comes up, that I've heard from teachers, which is legitimate, um, is if they get the homework assignment, it's shared with other students, and people copy, or don't, I mean, I, I recognize there are other issues, um, or I give them the assignment I thought I was gonna give, and that's not the one I ended up giving out, but then give them an extra credit point, or some sort of, I don't, I, there's gotta be a better way. Um, and so I'm just throwing that out there, because I was very disappointed to see that. I was very disappointed as a parent to see that, because I'm trying to encourage my kid to get out there and be proactive and take control of her own education, and then when that's the feedback I get, I just, I was disappointed.
It's interesting, uh, in regards to this, so in the, uh, if this handbook's adopted, it's saying that each individual school should establish a process, where I think maybe in the past, it's been each individual teacher has a process, as opposed to the school.
Well, actually, this was in the LaPlata handbook last year, and, uh, so I actually had seen it in the handbook, and when I brought it up to Mr. Albares, he was more than willing to, um, to address that, I think the point was, "Look, if you're gonna be gone, you only have those days to, to make it up," but they were, really weren't thinking about the more proactive approach at that time. Um, so I just, I, I wanna make sure that we're being considerate on both sides of And I don't know if that needs to be school-specific, or how that needs to be addressed. So that was all I had for the student-parent handbook, if anybody else has anything else for the student-parent handbook. I don't think that requires any changes, print ways.
I think the only, the only other clarification that, that I had was just the consistent titles for secretary and/or administrative assistant, and Mr. Clough had addressed that, so...
Yeah, we're in the process of reviewing all job descriptions for the district, uh, that's the next big project, Lisa Lucero is starting the process of compiling all the jobs and what we've had, and looking at bringing them up to speed. To address the question that the president brought forward, the difference between the secretary and administrative assistants because of responsibilities being year-round versus building-based, administrative assistants at central office because they're on a 260 contract, and that's the way we differentiated with them in the past, building secretaries were assigned, now they do have some duty overlap, we, we've looked at that, there are some duty overlaps, so like, for example, Lisa Lucero, Ms. Rodriguez, Lisa Beckett do have some administrative responsibilities in regard to state reporting and those types of things, to differentiate them from a building, because they're reporting at district level, not building level. So that's how they differentiated in the past, but we're looking at all those job descriptions, we will bring those forward to the board at a future date, we're doing, uh, that to make sure all the job descriptions align with what our people are doing, so that way we know exactly what their responsibilities are at each level, so that's why that was the difference inside the current job descriptions.
I did have one other thing.
Thank you. Yes, Dr. Diaz?
Um, so, the one thing I would say on this generalized handbook is, there's a spot in there where it talks about alcohol, tobacco, drug-free school district disciplinary matrix. I have to say, it's very hard to find the discipline matrix, even when you go through our policies, um, and I think that's also what has led to a lot of inconsistencies when we talk about violations of the policies, and then, you know, deciding on what the quote-unquote punishment or consequence is gonna be, the consequence, I would say, has been inconsistently inconsistent. Um, so I think when we're looking at the individual handbooks, I don't think it has to be in this part, but when we're looking at the individual handbooks, that makes sense, and I will say, that was really very well addressed in the activity handbook, so...
Are there questions or comments from the board?
Is that just for the student-parent?
Just for the student, um, we are on individual action item H, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools' parent-student handbook for 2018-2019. Other questions or comments or information? Mr. Clough, do you believe with that information, if the board moves to approve, we can, you can move forward with, with that?
Yes.
Okay, very well. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve individual action item H. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the Silver Consolidated Schools District Student-Parent Handbook as presented.
Got a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, that motion passes. Uh, next under individual action items is I, consideration and approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools Athletic Handbook for 2018-2019 school year. Members of the board, that was included in an email, and, and also on your board packet as everybody had an opportunity to review. Questions or, or information, Mr. Clough?
Uh, just the information presented on the update to address concerns that are brought forward by the board. Uh, Mr. Flores brought one up this morning by phone that I've added to the list that needs to have some further discussion regarding drug testing policies and district stance. I think the biggies are, um, the concern of violation happens af, at the very last event of a season, how to address that, so I gave some recommendations in the update of how we might be able to address that, and I gave you two written examples, um, from pre, from other handbooks that I have observed regarding, uh, conduct detrimental to the school, and an athlete's good standing policy that might address that concern. I also suggested that we look at moving the punishments to those that happened in the last event of the season, instead of using 90 calendar days, the next season of participation of the athlete. That could take a little bit more time, because right now, all our offenses are based on 90 days for alcohol, drugs, but other offenses that could occur, like, let's say a person gets in a fight at the last event, that may not be the 90-day suspension, how do you enforce that? Because it says number of contests, or days, based on what the handbook says, so that would take a little bit of logistical reworking, based on what the prior handbook was, and we look at changing it to, to looking at days in-season versus those types of, I mean, that could be a rare occurrence, but it could, could be a detriment to that. And there's also some other things I suggest is that we look at changing it from school days to calendar days, which could lengthen the length of the suspension, and maybe impact future athletic contests. So if I could get guidance from the board on what direction you would like to see pursue, I can draw some things up. With regards to social media policy that Dr. Diaz brought up, I told the administrators today, they liked the idea of using what we have in the handbook as a guide for parents of poor behavior in social, and we just put a clause in the athletic handbook stating that because of current district policies, state laws, federal rules and regulations, that social media could be a punishable offense, and it is, by our policies, so it would also apply to them in extracurricular settings, so we could eliminate using that as the sole purpose of what it is, and allow our administration to be able to use that as a teaching tool and guidance to parents of how kids should behave on social media. Um, and all five administrators that I talked to today, um, were all for it, looking at it as a teaching tool, as opposed to make sure it's just strictly in policy that we have to enforce it. So putting that one clause in there, is the social media clause, um, social media clause to address that would be good, and then Mr. Flores brought the drug testing, and I do not have much background on that, so leave that up to discussion of the board, just asking for guidance on, on what needs to happen to go forth from there. I do need to, I do need to bring this up, with NMAA, we are required to have parent meetings and notify parents of any changes to our handbook. It does not say, because I did consult the website today, it does not say we do not, we cannot have multiple meetings to inform them. So if we adopt the handbook and we make any changes, we are required by NMA policy to notify parents of any changes to the conditions of their kids' participation in sports, so if we adopt this as it is, and we decide to make a change regarding drug testing, or how are we gonna address the postseason offenses and those types of things, we just have to get notification after our parent meeting that it's changed, because they've already signed the handbook, we have to notify them of any changes that occur to possible punishments to their son or daughter. So we could do that in writing, we do it by notification, do it by parent meeting, that's what NMAA suggests, this means if we change any provision of our athletic handbook, after we've adopted. So we do have a means of communicating out any changes, that if we adopt it tonight, I wanna make additional changes in August, if you directly go back and gain further information, we make addendums, we can do that, and we can go ahead and notify parents in those ways to make sure they're aware that this is changed.
So if we don't adopt it tonight, make the changes, do we still have to have the meetings?
Yes, we're required to have a meeting every season with the outlets of the parents. That's an NMA requirement, so each season, our athletic directors have a parent-student meeting to advise them of it. So, we're getting up close to the deadline, because our fall sport starts August 6th, so we have to take that into account, we'll consider this, because otherwise, we could start the season without a handbook, which could cause some problems.
Or we could, it would remain as is until we made a change in the...
You could make a motion to remain as is until further determination, that could be the other way we could address this issue, until everything is addressed in there.
So the parents would need to sign the new handbook, then, once we change it?
Yes.
So they would sign...
They would sign the old one and the new one, they would have to sign both.
Would they have to just sign the, like, we could send home a couple of pages with revisions, or would they have to sign the whole new book again?
NMAA says that's up to district approval, um, so we would just have to make sure they notify, and I'd be very thorough to make sure they know exactly what policy and pages were changed. I'd recommend doing addendum with the new signature page, instead of us having to reprint 300, 500, 700, new handbooks. Um, so we could do that in a brief summary and, and have them do it, and then we would be ready for fall. I could print a limited number for fall, and then we could get the revisions, and then I could print a new set come winter, if that's necessary.
Because for our, our next meeting in August, if I'm looking at correctly, is the 20th, so that's gonna put us way past, uh, our, our fall meetings and, and starts. Questions or comments?
I, I have a few, and it's really more for us to ponder than it is really a, an issue with the book, it's more what we decide we wanna set forward as far as protocol. Um, so I think we need to make sure that, uh, if we approve anything, it says activity handbook, not just athletic handbook, because right now, it says athletic handbook, but it's for all activities.
It should say athletic and activity on the cover.
Oh, they're covered, I'm just saying for the purpose of our agenda.
Oh, okay.
Just to make sure. That way, everybody's covered.
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I, I just, I'd advised a few things for us to think about, and it's, it's, a lot of them are tied to the, the, I guess, penalties, but on 2.6.2, penalties for used possession, distribution of alcohol, and our controlled substances illegal, um, it says, um, first offense, 90 calendar days, um, that's, I don't, I am not debating that we can decide on that as group down the road, but, um, it says on there, "May participate in practice sessions if coach or sponsor allows." So, does, I, I feel like that's unfair to the kids that are there. If there are people that are gonna play, it should go to the people that are there who haven't been involved in that, and practice time shouldn't, you know, that's a lot of coaching attention, that's a lot of different things, um, the, the time taken away from the kids that are wanting to participate under the correct conditions, so I personally don't feel like it's appropriate for them to be participating in the practice, um, that's a hard one, again, because if we're talking, "Okay, well, something happened in the spring, does summertime count?" So I don't, I don't know how we wanna get into that, if it's formal practice during the year, because summer is technically voluntary, um, it's not really formal practices, so that, that would be something sticky, um, but they're volunteering their time and staying out of trouble, that one's a little easier for me to swallow. If it's, they're going to practice, and now it's during the season, and taking time from the people that are actually team members there, that should be the ones playing in the games, that to me is a little different, um, personally.
I think, um, you make a good point there, because I was thinking that that, that would be okay to stay, but, um, after hearing your explanation, during, uh, an active season, I think that's a good point, uh, they probably should not be participating, because then, although they're not participating in the maybe game activity, um, they're taking away potential learning time, or, for the, from those other athletes, so I think that would be good to maybe differentiate, you know, during in-season contests, they will not be allowed to practice, no, no exceptions, and then maybe during out-of-season, it's up to...
The discretion of the...
The discretion of the coach.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
I think that would be a, a fair edit, um, on that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not a person who's all about the punitive side, so I feel like everyone deserves a second chance, but I also feel like there are consequences to actions, and to take that time from other kids during season is definitely a different thing.
Unless, I have two things. I think it should be across the board, and so some coaches might allow it, and some might not, and so we might run into things like, "Well, he allowed it, why doesn't he allow it?" Do you know what I mean? So that might become an issue. And then, if you use something that happened this year, the girls from volleyball were allowed to practice...
Mm-hmm.
...in the offseason, and then were able to play, so really, they had no really ramifications for, um...
And I thought of that situation a lot, when I was looking at this, but I also feel like if we tried to cover every single loophole...
It's gonna be hard.
It's gonna be hard, and the reality is, we want the kids involved, so they're out of trouble. So I think, for me, that was the concession I made, in-season versus out-of-season, um, but that was hard, because I thought about that, too, I mean, but, um, for me, that was the middle ground.
Yeah, and, and that was my, my concern, too, with that first offense, was there's no teeth in it for that athlete that may get caught in the summer, or, um, may not play all three seasons, and has that gap, like we saw this last year, essentially, they know going in that, "Well, if I get caught, I'm not, I'm not missing out of competition."
So I guess the other question I had, when we talk about first, second offenses, third offenses, is that for the entire, so just say we're using high school, even though there's no school, is that for the entire high school career, or entire middle school career, or is it for the academic year?
The way it is worded currently, it is for the entire athletic career, but they do have a reset button after eighth grade. When they come into high school, they have, let's say they have a drug and alcohol offense in seventh grade basketball... let's say they have a drug and alcohol offense in seventh grade basketball, they have not a further one. NMAA allows them to reset the button at, at ninth grade to restart it. So, but some school districts that I did survey their athletic handbooks have it for their entire athletic career, seven through 12, because that's the way they have adopted it. That's a preference of the district. To me, when I look at it from, I'm like you, Dr. Diaz, I want to try to help these kids as best as possible do it. That's why I gave the athlete a good standing kind of detrimental. Do we consider, on a first offense for kids, especially young kids, do we look at a counseling option for them to get back in a good standing, get back in that activity, make them do something to earn it, but that's a discussion we need to have further than just tonight.
Right.
How do we address these issues to help the kids that make those dumb mistakes? And then get them back so they understand what's going on.
I like it.
So I think that's another discussion that we can have as a side like this, not just a punitive, but the rehabilitative. Make them, give them something to get them to work back. I agree, during season, if an athlete would do it as a coach, I wouldn't let that kid participate. But when you look at it and rehabilitate, if we give that kid that little bone, that's what keeps some of our kids academically eligible. If they don't have it, how do we make sure, can we make them strive to get, I don't want to say it's, it's like having your dog trying, trying to fetch the bone and you're having it up in front of them. How do we keep them motivated to keep going there? If we give them that little hope of, of counseling or intervention or community service or some type of thing that can get them back involved in activity, not just athletics, but this could happen with a student council member, keep in mind. And those are types of things we need to have a further discussion of how do we re-help rehabilitate kids.
I like it. I agree.
And I, I like that. I think, I think I've seen that before, is, okay, so we have the 90, or maybe we change this to have more teeth in it, so it, it's, it's for the, the 90 calendar days is active days, or days that they would be participating in an activity, that potentially could be, I think, what I'm hearing is maybe too much punishment that could essentially almost wipe out an entire season for, for an athlete. We have that, but then we also have, okay, you have the option, you made the decision to do this, you're either, in a sense, almost gonna wipe out your entire sports season, or you can go the route of some sort of educational opportunity, and it's something more than a half hour. I mean, it's something, a little bit-
Yeah.
...substance to it-
Mm-hmm.
-as, as a way to get back maybe sooner.
I would say two things, President, on this, too. I would say it's only for a first offense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, give them the opportunity on a first offense. And also, I struggle with this all the time. I know we have kids coming to our guidance counselors telling them they're involved with something that they're not allowed to, that are participating in our sports, but the confidentiality issues with our guidance counselors. How do we help those kids who want to get the help but are afraid to get punished in athletics? Is there a way we can look, there's been self-referral policies where we help a kid and give them the help and support. Again, I guess that bigger conversation rehabilting piece for kids, because if you look at the research that's going on, drugs, alcohol, tobacco, kids now are doing it, Dr. Diaz has seen this, seventh grade. End of seventh grade is when they're making decisions that affect their lives and careers after high school. I mean, so that's something that we have to consider. If we're using athletics as an educational tool for our athletes, how do we get them that helps and they're not making dumb decisions that affect their lives after high school, because we're the gateways of their success. So that's a bigger conversation that we need to have as a district to figure out what we do. But I think we can address the concerns by looking at that, put them to counseling, community service, have the 90 reduced to 45 for the first offense, if they're willing to do it. And, and kind of look at those things, whatever these calendar days, activity days, school days, just give them that hope that they can do it. We create some type of format where those kids have to earn it. They're just not gonna get handed it. They're not gonna attend a 30-minute session, because I know, I talked a little bit with some of the community counseling services, because I'm a member of DAMI, and talked to a little bit of them, talked to them. There are counseling services out there that I'd say it has to be the responsibility of the parent to pay for it, not the district, because they made the mistake, have them look at and put that in that policy. If you're gonna earn it, you've got to go enroll. There's a lot of free services out there for kids. They just gotta go find them. And if we can find the resources and give them a list of referrals and talk to those types of things, and give them, and help, help the parents in those types of things. So I think that's something we need to consider on the bigger picture of everything that we're doing and addressing this. So looking at those would be a positive in my mind.
I love it.
I kind of feel that almost, maybe even, I almost hate to bring this up, but I think it almost deserves the, maybe, uh, the formation of a committee that would include parents, student, coaches, to, to look at changes as a whole and then-
Yeah.
-and potentially even, maybe even a board member, I, I don't know. But I, I think certainly a good discussion, and this is just one piece on, on this handbook, the first offense. We could go through and, and kind of highlight some of the other areas that other board members have brought up, or Mr. Flores brought up, the drug testing. We could continue our discussion. At some point, we're gonna have to discuss it one way or the other.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. President, can I say, also suggest a work group of two board members, we're gonna be in Mr. Brown. So that way, you guys can go back and inform your board members what's going on, so you can give me the highlights, and then we can convene our committee and allow, so you'll get the parents, the coaches. I'd even say, let's get some student athletes, student council band members on here, because this does apply to marching band when they go to contests. So those types of discussion, I think we could have, and I think we could have a very worthwhile discussion. And always, one of the things I've heard along here is transparency of the processes. I think that's a very important aspect of this, that we need to get that parent involved and get that parent buy-in, because if we don't get it, we'll just be fighting it all along the way. So I think that's a very good approach. If two board members like to be ad hoc members, and we can convene bad advisory with the parents, and then we can bring that information back, we could, we can, I think we can get this done pretty quickly.
Mr. Clough, do you think it would be something we, um, and members of the board, something that we could table this, um, adoption for now, so the handbook would, would remain as is, convene a committee of some sorts, and then with maybe the goal to try and have a final product for the winter, winter sports?
I think that's reasonable. If I address, if we can get the notification out, I mean, we wanted to buy garage, like we had to bring up in the prior update, with a, we have to have meetings with the incoming freshman parents. So we can start there by notifying them of the, of the process and looking for that. We could even start it next week. I mean, if I can get listed names, I'd be willing to make calls of potential candidates that we could do, and coaches, and look at that, and I can work with Mr. O on this, of, of his involvement with this, since he's the athletic director, and Mr. Thompson's athletic director out there. Get parents from Cliff as well as in town, and, and have that hearty discussion of this and what's best for our kids. So I think that's what we need to do. I think it's, it's conceivable, I think we could get it considerably done at the latest October board meeting for winter sports.
My only concern, I think it's great to have community input, but I think it, it becomes a longer drawn-out process, depending on how many people you have involved. The other concern that I have is, say, we hold fall sports, fall activities to one standard, now we hold winter sports to a different standard. And that's kind of what happened when NMAA ruled out their new regulations without announcing them.
Yeah.
And so it's already, I, I can just, I think parents may have an issue with that when, if their kid somehow ends up with a violation in the fall, and it's handled in a different fashion than, say, someone in the winter, spring, who now had the opportunity to, to go forward with some of the options, like the decreasing it to a 45-day-
The other option we have, if you're concerned about that, Dr. Diaz, is we could adopt whatever changes you view as necessary for this year, and we have to live with it, and then look at it for rollout next year. I think it may take a little bit of that, if we're looking at drug testing, look at the cost and those types of things of what it would do, and looking at policies and having legal review it. I think that would be some of the drawbacks to this. So if there are significant issues that you want to address from last year's handbook to this year's, it stays into effect until we adopt it. And then whatever changes we make, we get notified, and it just means the parents have to sign two for, for fall with regards, like Mr. President brought up earlier. We, they would just have to sign two forms for fall. Once we had formally adopted in August for the school year, they would just have to sign two forms. One, they were notified that we already this, there are the changes that were made. They're, as long as they're not, the issue we'd run into with legal is that they're substantially different than the previous handbook that they could contest us on, because we change, like you said, doctor, it changes the rules of the game for our athletes. We just have to make sure that we are staying consistent, we're gonna look at punishments or look at those types of things. Keeping it consistent is gonna be our best interest.
And I would say, um, what we could do is, in, in these fall meetings, we could upfront say, okay, this is the existing handbook. There's gonna be a, a committee created to look at changes. Those changes won't occur until, you know, once those changes are made, they will not be in, go into effect until the board approves it, and it coincides with the beginning of, if it's ready by winter and, and we're ready to adopt it and put it in place by winter sports, then people know upfront, oh, okay, this chain, you know, this is where we're at right now. They've got a committee that's gonna be looking at potentially making changes, but we won't change it mid-sport. If a change is made, it would be made at the beginning of winter. If it's not ready at winter, then we try for spring. If it's not, when it's ready for spring, then, yes, we're looking at adoption.
I just feel like if we don't bring it out before the start of this one, then we, it really, if we don't bring it out at the beginning of a calendar year, it's really hard, because you do end up holding kids to different standards in the same year, and, and you run into that same inconsistency. Personally, that's my personal opinion.
I, I agree with Dr. Diaz in the fact that it's a long, we, we created a long drawn-out process to establish another committee, have more meetings, and then come to another board meeting, and then approve this, and approve that. And it's gonna be another year before we approve the changes, because that's how the armed security guards have been drawn out. It's been a drawn-out, last month, we approved them, but now it's back on the agenda. So it's not gonna be for another month. Um, we just gotta make the changes, and I'm telling you right now, if, if nobody's noticed, there is a serious drug problem, not at Soover High only, but it, this whole state, there's a drug problem. And we need to address it by putting some teeth into this policy, by having the random drug testing. I've talked to Mr. Brown with it. I've talked to Mr. Wajaka. Um, I think he told me that legal's already onboard. The cost is gonna be, um, it's not gonna be a significant cost, because the more tests we do, the cheaper it is. So parents and students, athletes are gonna be aware, before the season starts, there's gonna be random drug testing for every sport. Maybe, uh, one time in the fall, one time in the winter, or spring, wherever the sports are. And that will also help identify athletes that have a problem, and they can go, can go back to this 45-day calendar if, if, if they get caught. But we need to start somewhere. And I don't think by creating another committee i- is gonna help the problem. It's just gonna delay it, and delay it, and delay it.
I'm happy to have a special meeting, because I think we also have some things that we're not in agreement. I'm not in agreement with random testing, I'm not in agreement with something that costs the district more money. I am in agreement for the rehabilitation. I think there are pieces to this that require work. And I think we could make it a bigger deal with more community involvement, which is not a bad idea, but if we're gonna roll that whole thing out, I think that's something that we say, okay, you know, starting next spring, we want to have parents and everybody meet, and then that's something we'd roll out and approve at the ne, the July meeting next year. But if we want to make our sort of preliminary changes to, to have this ready for the upcoming calendar year, to me, I think that makes sense.
I, I think we, we probably need more discussion. I mean, we could try and do that tonight if people wanted to and then come to a consensus, but I think having a little bit more community slash coach involvement will be beneficial for significant changes. If we're just talking, you know, a couple of changes, they're maybe more cosmetic, but I think what I'm hearing is, is we want to make some significant, potentially some significant, uh, changes to, um, penalties for first offense, drug testing. I mean, what else is, what else is there that board members have, have identified? Is there anything this is a bunch of legal?
I just have a few, um, for, it was the 2.6, whose responsibility is it to report it? Because, I mean, we, we have coaches that will say, yes, there's a drug problem on my team. We have kids that know exactly who's doing the drugs, but they've never had any consequences, it's never been reported. And so it's kind of like, it's great to have all of these in place, but whose responsibility is it to say?
Well, I think clearly it's the coaches if they catch them doing it, but if there's the hearsay of stories, it, it's not their job to turn it into a private investigator either. I mean, I think you call someone and if you're concerned, because you're concerned about a kid, if there is something brought to your attention. But I also don't think it's your job to go out there and, and turn into a private, you know, investigator. It's your job to try to help with the well-being of the child, if they're, to, to sort out is there an issue. But I, I think you can get into rumors and a lot of things very quickly, and I, I don't think it's, um, really the obligation of the coach to sit there and say, okay, well, we heard this rumor, we're gonna bring you in.
Yeah, no, mine's not, I'm not talking rumors.
But I, I, you know, if you catch somebody doing that, then it is your obligation.
And, and we have people that are not, that they're not.
Well, I think that's where the random drug testing comes in, because once it's random, it's not selective. And then once that athlete tests positive, now there's no question about it. Now that, that student athlete is gonna be addressed by the administration because of the positive test.
Right.
And you have backup.
And, and it becomes a deterrent.
Mm-hmm. A deterrent to play or a deterrent to use drugs?
I think a deterrent to use drugs.
I would say so, too. But you could, it could be to play, yeah, you're right.
Right now, I'll tell you, we have, uh, four basketball players for the girls' basketball team. So I, I'm not saying that we make exceptions or that we accept poor behaviors, but I also don't think we need other deterrents right now. For the majority of activities, it's hard to get kids to show up, period.
I think drug, illegal drug use is, is unacceptable, regardless of them playing sports or not. It's just unacceptable.
Even if it meant we had no athletic programs-
Absolutely.
-because there's so much drug use.
Activity programs.
Oh, activity, yeah.
But, yeah.
So my other one was, um, for 210, if you go from 26 to 210, substance abuse is also a violation of law. So what supersedes? You know, it's like, do you, do we go with 2.6 violations, or do we go with 2.10 violations?
Right.
Is it, because they're not the same. They're different, they're very different. So it's open to whoever's going to institute the penalty, whether, which one they go with.
Well, and the practice is also different on there.
Mm-hmm.
So for 210, you can practice, um, pretty much across the board unless there's a career suspension. Or you could just be suspended from the practice and not the game is what it sounds like under 210.
Yeah.
Um, whereas 26, that's a different layer.
Right. So again, that's open to, you know, what, whoever's decided, whoever's that, um, doing that. And then I think what I'm hearing on the social media, media policy, because I was wondering, what are the requirements for reporting? You know, does someone have to screenshot it, to who, blah, blah, blah? Um, but it sounds like now if we go to that being more of a teaching point, did you say that it still is a punishable violation?
Yeah, it's still in our, our policies and parents' good handbook.
So what would, so it wouldn't look the way it looks?
No.
It would say, then we would have like a first offense, second offense, third offense type thing?
No, we would just use it as, the suggestion was made that we just use it to highlight inappropriate behavior and remove the offenses out of there, because we do have parents that violate the social media policy.
Well, and that was, and that was, when I was, when I was reading the, um, when I was reading the email about social media policy, I think it made, I think the attorney made it very clear that we could not do that for our employees.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I didn't interpret that to be that we couldn't do it for our athletics or activities, activities and athletics, let's put them together. Um, and I think traditionally, and it's something that Michelle has brought, I mean, of course, she helps to see, helped me to see both sides, um, you don't want to make it harder to be an athlete or, or in activities, but at the same time, you are allowed to hold them to a higher standard. So is that what instituting a social media policy would actually do? Just hold them to a higher standard?
Well, the social media policy applies to all students, because if it's reported as cyberbullying or whatever, we have required investigative policies. So to me, this is almost redundant. The only thing we are affirming with this is you're setting up a process if they're caught for athletics and activities.
Offenses.
So if they're, let's say, for example, they get cyberbullying, they get five days out of school suspensions, which is one of the steps in our, in our discipline matrix, that person would automatically be ineligible for, for those five days of- be ineligible for, for those five days of participation because it'd be, depends on if it's out of school, in school, no matter. They're not eligible to participate. So then you also have the unexcused absence policy in the handbook that would apply to them. So because those are not counted as excused absence, the second one of those could result in them being removed from the team. Second offense.
And that's how we see it. But sometimes lines of communication, it's like, oh, this happened, but then these people are still participating or stuff. You know what I mean? So I just feel like sometimes it's kind of like what I pointed out with six-point-two and, or I'm sorry, two-point-six and two-point-ten. It's like, it's open to whoever's delivering the, the penalties at the time.
And I may be incorrect, but I think in the policy, it actually says that those cannot be counted as unexcused absences for the activity policy.
But it does state that a second one would be removable from the squad.
Correct. But I'm just saying those aren't, then it wouldn't speak to the.
So I might have misspoke of it being counted as unexcused absence. It counts as a punishment for them. The second offense is removable from the team.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay. And then I go on to, um, the parental guidance, which I appreciate. I mean, I think for some people, you just have to really lay it out there in wording. Um, but what happens when, like a student athlete does not feel safe approaching the coach? Um, it is in the encourage your child to?
This is an NMA document.
Okay.
In support of, of their sportsmanship policy. So that came directly from NMA for compete with class. So that is their document that was being added.
Okay.
So that, those pages fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen are directly from NMA's compete with class.
Okay. And we're just going to adopt them? No?
Cause that's what NMA, you have the rights of board not to, not to adopt it. But NMA, this is what they've adopted for state participation in athletics activities that they were going to give as information to the parents.
Okay, this is going to be a, a, this is just information. It's not, it's not policy or?
No. It's just information from NMA.
I think the other reality with that is if a student did feel, didn't feel comfortable, there's a chain of command within which you should navigate.
Right.
Does it, Montenegro, anything else on the student athlete?
I guess the only other thing is, we've talked about it in the past, it's not here, but is there a, a coach's slash sponsor quota contact? I know we talked about that and that Mr. Wajaka is going to develop something that, you know, this is how we expect the kids to act this way. But, you know, the coaches and the sponsors should also be held to, you know, that higher standard. So that was one thing.
I think they have to go through a whole training process before they're even allowed to coach through the NMAA directly. Um, and it's a very long, vigorous, online training.
Okay.
Um, so I'm not sure that we need to include them in that, but it's definitely.
Yeah, I just wondered what they were required. And then, um, the spectator, I think you've clarified that that was just an NMA best practices, but I would say like, if this is what we want to happen in our, on our fields and in our, in our things, then we've got to somehow communicate this. So it's going to go to parents, but it's not going to go to spectators. So signs or whatever. Um, I know for the soccer league, we put out signs that say, you know, this is a kid zone and this is how we expect our people to, to act. And so, um, that was my, that was another thing was just how are we going to relay that information to the spectators? Um, you know, and I think we may have had some compete, compete with class banners up in the gym now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Stuff like that.
And they redesigned it so they have to get new ones.
Oh, great.
And they may actually be releasing, um, the last information that I received from them, being a former athletic director at Crown Point, is they were going to bring it up at the July Athletic Director State Meeting that everybody's required to attend them. You could have the possibility of buying those banners or they will have a supplier that you can get them cheap from to put them up in all your athletic complexes. Plus, every contest we do the compete with class announcement, this is there. They recommend we put it in the, on our webpages. They recommend that we put it in our, our programs, whatever we do to get the information out. Um, some school, those who have put inserts in the parent handbooks that when they send it home at the beginning of the school year, if you're going to an event, here's, so we can look at doing some of those things too.
Yeah. That's, that's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Khan. What items do you have on the?
Well, it was just the, the penalties and then, you know, throwing in the, the drug testing.
Were your comments on penalties and we'll address that first, I guess.
Well, there, there just needs to be a little bit more, if they violate them, I, I'm, I'm pretty much for, um, for, um, I can't think of the word. I'm trying to go back to that. For punishment, is it that they get caught? I think the first time, but then second and third. And then my question was after the, the last offense, is that carried over if they go to another district and want to participate in the activity?
It's up to the individual, uh, district of how they adopt it. Um, NMA suggested those follow it just like would be a, like long-term suspension in school, they suggested, but it's up to each individual school district to control that for their.
Okay. So that one athlete can go to another?
And then they'd be subject to their, their, their penalties or whatever they choose to do.
And then it just, I, I, I agree with, with Mr. Flores with the, with the drug testing, you know, if, if somebody sees an athlete or, um, a student on a band trip or, um, organization trip and, and they violate the activity handbook by drinking, um, using, using drugs, um, it's a hearsay type of deal. Um, therefore, if we have drug testing, you know, it's, there's no investigation and it's over, it's.
So are you saying that there was someone that stepped forward reporting that, that you should automatically test the person in that activity?
That could be.
I wholeheartedly disagree with that. If you're going to do it, make it random. But I, I, we're not, it's not our job to turn into private investigators. You catch somebody, you're in charge of monitoring them and watching them and you catch somebody, it needs to be reported and addressed. But I, I don't think it's our job to play police and I don't think it's our job to provide, uh, you know, it's our, I, I think the rehabilitation piece becomes lost if we become too punitive.
Mr. Khan, anything else on the activity handbook?
That is it.
Dr. Diaz, any other comments or concerns on the athletic handbook?
Um, no, my, my last one was really tied to two-ten. Um, and it was really, uh, the discrepancy about, uh, if you read first offense, it says, uh, suspension from next activity if at school, uh, ten-day suspension or two-event suspension includes practice is what it says in parentheses. So does that mean you can miss two practice days and then be returned or two games? It seems like that could be left open to interpretation and inconsistency. Um, and then the second offense says a ninety-day, uh, but you may practice and I don't think you should be able to practice if in season or however you want to word it. I think that should be consistent with what we said on, was it two-six?
Mm-hmm.
So that those should be consistent regarding practices. Um, and then like I said, I think the, the first one is a, a little bit loose with the first offense. It could be in, left really wide open for interpretation.
And I would even add that two-ten should say unless drug or alcohol, you know what I mean? Take that out.
So then there's not the discretion.
Exactly.
You know which?
Which one you have to go with. It's very clear.
I'll have to give it to Mr. Wajka and see what he intended. Because the way I read that is I think this is intended for offenses on our drug and alcohol.
So we should just.
For chargeable offenses underneath statute or, or, or children's code.
So then we should.
So therefore we, we have to clean up the language and clarify it.
Okay. And then I think cleaning up the first offense, because it, right here, you could say suspension for two activities, which could mean two practices. You could say two activities, which could be two games, or you could say a ten-day suspension. I mean, to me, it's very hard to.
Yeah, it's too, yeah, no, it's too loose.
And then, like I said, the practice piece needs to be consistent with what we say in two-six.
Anything else, Dr. Diaz?
I think that's it. You've heard enough from me.
Mr. Flores?
I agree with Dr. Diaz as far as may not participate in practice. And everybody's already said why. Because I think it does set a bad precedent to other student athletes. When someone gets caught and they're still out of practice, it takes away from their learning time. Enough's been said on that, but I agree with Dr. Diaz on that point. And to address Mr. Khan, if, if there was in fact, a coach did find an illegal drug, a student with an illegal drug, that coach isn't going to turn into an investigator. However, that coach, along with the principal, is going to call law enforcement because it is a violation of state statute or city code. And law enforcement will take on as a criminal investigation from that point.
Well, I'm just saying to a point, if we did our own, you know, however we decided to, to drug test, if there's no hearsay.
Right, right, right. It'd be random.
However.
Yeah, it'd be random.
However, we formulate the, the activity handbook. It, it just, my random thoughts, I was thinking, you know, talking to, to Mr. Claude separate about that then at the meeting, but.
I'm not attacking you.
Yes. No, 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 I just, I was prepared but not prepared, you know.
Anything else, Mr. Flores?
No, sure.
Um, some of my comments on athletic handbook, uh, I think fairly consistent. It sounds like, uh, I thought we needed some more teeth or something else, something more in the first offense. Um, the other item that I, that I, in regards to drug testing, you know, I've had some experience at a previous district that did drug testing that was random. Um, I do think for some, it is an out for that athlete at saying, hey, you know, if they're getting peer pressure to, um, use, they could, I mean, their out is, hey, I want, you know, I might get drug tested. I don't want to take that, that chance. And so it's, it's in some ways an, an out for that, from that peer pressure for athletes. Um, I don't remember what the cost was, but it was, it was done by a contractor. Really, um, all they did was once a month submit about six, six, they didn't even have names. It was by student ID. So then the ID numbers are given over, they're matched up by the principal. The one thing that was kind of hard would be, kind of hard to swallow is it occurs during the school day. So they're pulled out during the school day, a contracted nurse comes in, performs the test and sends them back to class as soon as they're done. And then really, I think the other person that, the only people that knew who tested positive were the principal and the superintendent and, and it was handled completely away from, from coaches, from parents. Um, I would have to check. I think there was also reasonable suspicion. So if somebody wasn't acting right, they weren't, um, there could be a potential to, to have them tested for that. So.
And that had to be in the athletic handbook?
That was, that was part of the athletic handbook. Um, overall, my feeling is, I think we've got a few points that have been repeated across the board. Drug testing being one, first descent, first offense, um, penalty, uh, some language cleanups there with the practice, uh, whether they can practice or not. Um, I think if, if the board, if the desire of the board is to, to make those changes, I do think a committee could look at those few things fairly quickly and maybe we could try for a winter, we could try for a spring to roll those out, um, at that time. Mr. Brown, any thoughts from, from yourself?
No, the discussion pretty much covers it.
Members of the board?
I just hate to delay it. I want to just get it done and put it out there. But it, I mean, it's just part of the way that this is, like Eddie said, it's just hard, you know?
The process.
It is. And we sure appreciate that you got this out to us in like your first week of work.
Yeah, definitely.
We appreciate that you're making an effort to help us clean this up.
And I love the rehabilitation piece personally.
So.
I think it's good to have a positive.
Members of the board, we have an action item I consideration, consideration of approval of the Silver Consolidated Schools Athletic Handbook for the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen school year before us. I will entertain a motion.
You think someone's got it?
And I would, I would move to table the item until a committee is presenting, presents the board with these items, I guess clarification, uh, of these items, items that we have discussed for approval.
I will second that. I just want to know what that does to you.
We have three mandatory reporting requirements for NMAA. We have to notify them their academic, you know, academic eligibility and participation rights. Um, so with the change of the new NMA, we can do that in a one-page handout and let them know that these are the eligibility. They should already been notified back in spring. I would hope that was sent out, but I can't verify or deny that because being eleven days. But we can do that at parent meetings, um, with regards to new eligibility standards that were ruled out because their determination was based on last school year. So those athletes should already know whether they're eligible or not. Um, the second thing we'd do would be, what are we going to do with the offenses that they do occur in this transition? So we would just have the old handbook in place until it was there. And the other thing it would impact right now is the middle school with regards to their eligibility process. Cause they tried to mirror the NMAA one with a two-point GPA, but they allowed for weekly eligibility to be determined in behavior to determine their participation. And they did allow participation with no more than two F's. So it could impact that for a little bit. But I think we can work through with Lewis and Cliff, the middle school eligibility piece to this because they do not have to strictly follow the NMAA rule. They had already had their behavior, contracts and policy and trying to standardize between Cliff and Silver is what the intent of this is trying to do. So we'll just delay that a little bit. So I can sit down with those principals, make sure they understand that middle school eligibility will be this and we can notify parents too.
So you're okay?
Yeah. Like, we can get this worked out internally. We just have to make sure we meet the NMA reporting, we have the meetings and notify them of the eligibility and, and the process that we have with them. Uh, they are, student athletes have to go through the concussion protocol. Um, so they're already doing that. I know coaches are already doing that. So I think everything else, I think once we work through those just two pickups, I think we'll be okay.
And then if, when would, when could we do the next, you're thinking, when, when did you think that we could approve one?
If we get this thing rolling quick and get the participation we need in it, um, I'll put the, I don't want to say put the heat, but I'll get the recommendations from the administrators and coaches and parents. I can even, I'm going to the PAC meetings for the high school and the, and Cliff. I got the PAC meeting tomorrow night for Cliff. I'm going to start letting parents know this is coming. So we can start that conversation and get it. And I'm hoping that we can get this done by October. So we can get it put in place for winter. I think, I think this process can move rather quickly if we get the right people on there and we don't overburden them with ten, twenty meetings. These will be very specific points to talk about and get a conclusion to that's directed from you of what we need to address. So to me, it sounds like we need to address the first offense. We need to address the feelings on drug testing and what's the feeling of rehabilitation and self-referral with regards to getting them help before they get to that one. I think are the three points we need to come to a conclusion on. If there's more, give me guidance and I'll work with you.
And I personally feel like self-reporting should be no penalty.
Self-reporting? No?
Okay.
Throw that out on there as well, the self-re.
But the, the ninety-day and then less than the forty-five for reinstatement should be.
Yes.
And Mr. Cliff, I can speak to Silver High. I know in their spring meetings, it was put before the parents that the NMA was making the changes and so they, they were aware, at least verbally, that.
Well, we're all required to notify them once they came down in April. So I know when I did it, when I was at Crown Point, everything went out to the parents. So I'm pretty sure that Victor would be very professional in doing it. And I'm pretty sure Cliff did it last year when I met with him to let them know it was coming.
Very well. Any other discussion? Members of the board, we have, um, on action item I, a motion and a second to table item I until um, a committee has, uh, tipped or revisions for us to adopt, review and adopt. All those in All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that item is tabled until further notice. Next on our agenda this evening, under individual action items is item J. It's the second reading of the Policy Service Advisories 141 through 156. Any questions or comments from members of the board or administration on those policy advisories?
Administration.
I will entertain a motion to approve the second reading of the Policy Service Advisories 141 through 156 as presented.
Still moved.
Got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor approving now item J, Policy Service Advisories 141 through 156, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes. Mrs. Hernandez, if you would let Policy Advisory, Mr. Williams, I believe is his name, know that we've adopted those. Thank you. Next on our agenda is future meetings and proposed agenda items. The next scheduled work session and regular board meeting will be August 20th. The region meeting will be September 25th in Camado. That is a Tuesday. Please let myself or Mr. Brown or Mrs. Hernandez know if you plan on attending that event because we will probably carpool.
Just for the day.
And spend the night at the hotel in Camado. Just kidding.
I was like, really?
I don't know if there is a hotel in Camado, but we could camp.
There is a camp behind the, the gas station there, so you might be able to range for that.
Then item C, the annual convention, December 7th and 8th in Albuquerque. Next on our agenda is open public comments. Mrs. Hernandez, do you have any public comments?
No, sir.
Submitted? None are submitted. Very well. Next on our agenda is executive session, closed pursuant to dash 10, 15, dash 1, H2 through H9, NMSA 1978. And I believe we do need to go to executive session.
Yes, sir.
So, Mrs. Hernandez, would you conduct a roll call for us to go into executive session?
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mrs. Montenegro?
Yes.
Mr. Con?
Yes.
Dr. Diaz?
Yes.
And Mr. Flores?
Yes.
Very well. The time is 8:55 and we'll take a break for a few minutes.